Good evening Garner. Welcome to the town meeting, regular meeting of the town council on June 18th. We're glad to have you here. I've never seen so many happy faces in here at one time. We've got great stuff on the agenda tonight and then some kind of more tedious stuff, but we'll work our way through it. We're going to start out by calling the meeting to order with a roll call.
Mayor Douglas.
Here.
Mayor Probst.
Here.
House Member Barerger.
Here.
House Member Singleton.
Here.
House Member Dallinger.
Here.
House Member Mack.
Here.
Thank you, and we will do our usual pledge of allegiance and invocation. And Mayor Pro-ten Elmo Vance might introduce our special guest.
Yes, we can pledge and then...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
To the mayor council and to our gathered members here. This evening, we have a longtime Garner resident, Reverend Carlton McDaniel will be giving us the invocation for this evening.
This one here?
Yes.
Lot of excitement in this room tonight. I wasn't planning on staying, but I think I'll have to. I asked the mayor for permission to say a few words prior to the invitation, and he gave me permission to do that. But when I say a few words, you know, a retired pastor, you know, we don't get to do all this. You may be here, you're not. I'm only kidding. This past May 25th, a longtime resident, former mayor and councilman of Garner, passed away. In the following week, I officiated the funeral of Joe Creach. When he came to Garner in 1977, I knew Joe Creach only by his role as a mayor. I knew the name, but I did not know the person. After my retirement from Highland Baptist Church, I served the White Oak Baptist Church in Archery Lodge as an interim pastor for two years. And it was during that time that I came to know Joe. Not Joe a name, but Joe the person. It was not long after I moved to Garner in 77 that Kathy, Joe and Phyllis's daughter, had the tragic automobile accident in Florida. And for 38 years, she was confined to a van as a paraplegic, unable to care for herself in any way. I asked Joe and Phyllis for the visit with him one time when we were visiting Kathy. I said, "How do you communicate to Kathy?" And they said, "We communicate with words she can hear." I said, "Well, how does she communicate with you? She can't talk." And he said, "She does it by the blinking of the eye." And I thought about how grievous, over a period of 38 years, it was to stand by a daughter in a van that could do absolutely nothing for herself. So the most difficult funeral service that I ever participated in was that for Kathy on November the 22nd, 2017. Before the service, her mother gave me a short paragraph and said, "Would you read this?" And I agreed to do that, and she said I would not be able emotionally to do that. So she asked me to read it. It was very brief, but at the closing sentence, she had these words. "We had prayed for a miracle for Kathy, but it didn't happen." And then four words, capitalized and in bold print, "But God is good." About five years later, Phyllis, her mother, passed away, and I'd received a call from Joe Junior, and he said, "Mom wants you to come down." And I came down and I visited with her, and she made a simple request. "Pastor Mack, will you say a few words over me when I'm gone?" And I was more than privileged to do that. About two years later, Joe also died on January the 8th, 2000, 2024, I believe it was. So I asked him time to say the above before my prayer, because I realize, being a pastor for many, many years, and knowing you and your calling, and whether it be a calling to be a mayor or a councilwoman or a councilman, teacher, ball player, or whatever it might be, we not only perform our work and our duties without having something else that is very precious and very burdensome at times, knowing that life is up and life is down. And I thought about Joe. Joe was mayor here, I believe, for 12 years, somewhere around there. And thinking of our prayer, sometimes, you know, we go to meetings and we pray for everybody, but what we need to pray for? And I said, "I know that there was a life with Joe Creach, many, 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 many times when he was where you are, buddy, and as a councilman also. And he was performing duties while he had a daughter laying as a paraplegic in a van for 38 years. And you're balancing the duties and the burdens of a job that is very important, but you're human, and you have the emotions, you have the fears, you have the doubts. We all do, because we are human. As Joe said in the Old Testament, he said, "Man that is born a woman is of few days and full of trouble." And they are both inevitable and they're universal. We have troubles, and at the end, we're going to leave this world. So I thought about Joe. I came to know him. I came to know his faith. I came to know Phyllis. I came to know the family. And just as the Creach family demonstrated faith and love and hope in those years of his or her suffering, we also can find that peace and that strength in the one that they found that in the Lord Jesus Christ. So for this evening, I want to pray, and I want to pray for you, for I know you have burdens, you have problems, you have desires, and you have a job. And may God help us to lean on Him and to know that He's always there. May we pray. Eternal God, our loving, faithful Father, and pause until you remember Joe Creach at his public service in the town of Garner, and his 42 years of service through the National Guard. Lord, we are grateful for all the men and women who through the ages have made Garner the vibrant, growing community that we love to call home. For these who sit before us tonight, public servants, they provide leadership and work in their area. Lord, there are many other people employed and who are involved in this town, and we give you thanks for them. And Father, we know that in answer to your call upon their lives for public service, they have heavy loads of responsibility to discharge, causing at times family activities to be put on the back burner, times when days are not long enough to fulfill the dual role as husband, wife, father, mother, in public service. We know, Lord, that they are physically, mentally, emotionally, and spiritually, even at times exalted, and it's servants of the people of this town. They must leave, they must live with disagreements, conflicts, and different views. So, Lord, we come to pray that you would give them tolerance, listening ears to the voices of other people. You would give them compassion for the needs of people, and you would give them convictions that allow them to do what is right for every jobs. We all know we live in perilous and dark times, but, Lord, we know that we can be a light in the darkness. And even though we can't brighten the whole world, we can brighten the corner in which we live. So help us all here tonight as we look to you in faith and in hope and in courage that we may all stand faithful to your calling, and we may have courage and confidence and trust in our sovereign Lord. It is in your name that we pray, and for your sake, amen.
Thank you Pastor Mack. Very inspirational, and thanks for helping us remember our good friend, great citizen, Joe Creach. Thank you. I checked with our attorney to see if I could adjust the program just a little bit with an act of Congress or an act of the board, because we have two presentations I can't wait to get to, so I'm going to ask the petitioners and comments to be patient with us just a moment while we make two presentations. Then we'll come back to petitions and comments and consent agenda and the stuff that's not nearly as exciting as being a state champion. Which is almost as exciting as retiring after 25 years of service. So I'm going to talk about Deputy Chief Mike McKeever just a little bit. I'm going to read a resolution and see if I can get the council to adopt it. But before I read this, I just got to tell you how Mike has affected my life personally, working with him in the POW, the Police Athletic and Activity League. It's just been a pleasure, eight, 10, 20 years, however long it's been. It's been a long time. But he was always there with a smile, always a dedication to the kids and to his officers, and just made it so inspirational and so much fun to do that I can't thank him enough. And now, I'm going to read this resolution here and see if I can get the council to approve it. This is the resolution of appreciation for the services of Michael J. McKeever. Says, "Whereas Mike McKeever first served the town as a police officer in the police department when he was hired on January 19th, 1999, and whereas Mike was promoted to police sergeant effective on September 6th, 2004, and whereas Mike was promoted to police lieutenant effective on February 1st, 2016, and whereas Mike was promoted to police captain effective on September 27th, 2021, and whereas Mike was promoted to deputy chief effective May 9th, 2022, and whereas with over 25 years of service to the town, Mike McKeever has served unselfishly in his capacity for the good of the town of Garner, making sacrifices in personal and family ties. And now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Garner, North Carolina, that Mike McKeever is hereby officially commended by this council on behalf of the citizens of Garner for valuable and outstanding service rendered to the town of Garner in his official capacity as deputy police chief with the town of Garner Police Department. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the permanent record of the town of Garner, and that a copy of his resolution be presented to Mike McKeever." So saying that, I'm going to ask for a motion by the council to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Singleton, second by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of approving this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, don't even say it. You got the police here, you might suffer. So don't even say it. So that's correct. And Mike, if you would meet me at the podium along with Acting Deputy Chief Chris Adams for the presentation here.
We're going to stand this way and face that way. And Chris is going to make the few comments and make the presentation. You can use the microphone, you can just talk with him, as you'd like.
Well, the chief regrets she couldn't be here, and she asked me to say a few words, which may have been a mistake, because until a few days ago, Deputy Chief was my supervisor. So what I really want to say is, you did a great job. And like we said before, like your father before you, you have served the citizens of Garner well, and less left us better than you found us. And you've been a good leader, mentor, and brand, been a good friend to me, and I appreciate everything done, and thank you, and enjoy every second of retirement.
Thank you, Mike McKeever, for all that you've done.
Well, that was pretty good, but nothing like the next one we got coming up. We're going to recognize that Garner made an high school softball team on their statewide championship, and I mean going out with a bang, two in a row with a big score differential, just unbelievable. I'm going to ask their coach, Mr. Charles Harris, if you would come up and maybe say a few words. Coach Harris?
I'm here, Coach Barbara's there, Coach.
Okay.
You can use that mic right there if you like, sir.
Yes, sir. Come on, Coach Barbara.
Yeah, give us a little bit of the backstory on this. I think there's more. There's more to it than meets the eye. Yeah, that'll be a good place right there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that so?
Picked up on a couple of things that the pastor was talking about. Pastor, you are right, God is good all the time.
Amen.
All the time. He blessed me with about 17 wonderful girls, student athletes, that made this town of Garner proud. We set a schedule this year so that if we were successful, we would not have to leave home in order to play a playoff game. And we didn't have to leave until the fifth round. And then on our way to Greensboro, which we had to leave home for. And, you know, we were the 28-2 record. That's the most wins of any team that we've ever had. I've been doing this for 21 years, came close my very first year, didn't know what I was doing as a coach, I just had a solid picture that took us a long ways. But this year, we had a solid ball team, top to bottom, solid ball team. And I'm so thankful that we represented our school, our parents, and our community so well. I also picked up on the pastor saying that we all have desires, and we desire new bleachers. I figured, you know, the best time to ask for something is when you're on top. Is that right, Mr. Phil Matthews? Great, you know. That's right. I mean, this is the first time that I've actually been in this new building here, and it's absolutely gorgeous. I love the way this seating is, wide, plenty of legroom right here. If ballparks had seating like this, it would be a full house every night, I promise. But I just want to thank y'all for recognizing us as a lifelong resident of Garner. I'm just so happy for these girls, for my daughter Morgan, who is my assistant coach, who is also a biology teacher at the high school, who also played for me, for my other coach Ricky Harris, who is also a lifelong resident. You know, I told my wife, when I pass away, I don't care what she puts on my tombstone or my obituary, as long as it says, "I'm from Garner, North Carolina." Thank you.
And before you sit down, before you sit down, sir, before you sit down, I've been told we have to have a photo op, and I believe that means the whole team has to stand up here. I'm going to be in it, I'm going to be in it.
Hey, y'all stand up, I want y'all to be in it.
Okay, well, I'll stand up. Let's all stand up back here.
Get the real starters down there.
Mayor, you can come down and get in.
Well, okay.
Bring this young lady, take her seat up here. She might not get in.
The long coat chairs, we long coat chairs.
Come on down here.
Ready? One, two, three, one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine. Gosh, I got a lot.
Airdrop, airdrop.
Congratulations.
Okay, can we go home now? No, no, we still have, we still, thanks for your flexibility in doing the presentations, those were big deals, big deals to all of those folks. We'll get back on track now. We'll go back to our petitions and comments, and I'm legally obligated to read these certain words every time to make sure we're doing the right thing. But this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in this agenda regarding matters germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments section. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future date. And I'll ask the town clerk if anyone has signed up to speak.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I have the sign-in sheet. We have three individuals, all who want to talk on affordable housing. The first is Reverend Ben Acton.
Yes, Reverend Ben, good to see you again, and I might remind all of you, we really ask you to hold your comments to three minutes in respect for the other people sharing their time, because we've got a lot of things to go. There's even a little timer there, but don't worry, it doesn't buzz or explode, or the trap door doesn't open to drop in with alligators or anything.
You've already had one preacher, so I'm going to try to be very brief. Mr. Mayor, town council, neighbors, town staff, thank you for the work you do and for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Ben Acton. Some folks call me Pastor Ben or Reverend Ben, but I answer just by Ben. And Friday, this coming... And my greatest privilege in serving the town, beyond being the pastor at First Presbyterian Church, has been being a member both of the Town of Garner's Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Committee, as well as our Juneteenth Committee. And what I've come to know in all those experiences is what everyone in this room already knows, Garner is the place to be. It is a good place to be, it's an active, growing, welcoming community, it is home to, as we just heard, the best softball team in the state, and it is a spirit as well, a spirit of a people and of leadership who are curious and creative, especially when a new problem emerges. And so, I'm thankful that as, there have been conversations, I know, going on for a long time, but particularly as I've talked to pastor friends and other friends who are residents of Garner, affordable housing seems to keep coming up in these conversations. And it is a complex issue, it is complicated, there are legal, moral, safety, spiritual aspects, just to name a few. I'm preaching to the choir, I know. It is a complicated issue, but I'm grateful that Garner is not letting the difficulty deter us from trying to talk about it and address it. And I'm especially thankful for that, I think, coming out of our Juneteenth celebration this past Saturday, thinking about July 3rd in just a little over a week time, because at the heart of the discussion on affordable housing really is freedom. We are celebrating our Freedom Weeks, and so to be able to continue talking about what does freedom mean, especially for those who worry about having the safety of a home, or having the home they've lived in forever still be one they can afford, is an important conversation to have and fits right into who Garner has always been and who we envision ourselves to be. So again, I am thankful, I'm just thankful for this opportunity to bring that again to our mind, I'm thankful for other friends who will speak today also reminding us of this need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Ben, we take that in heart, thank you for your concern for your neighbors, your brothers, on the affordable, affordable housing, I can tell you this, and I might ask our town manager to chime in to round it out, but at the council's planning retreat a couple of months ago, we identified affordable housing as exactly, you said, complicated, confusing, many facets, legal, moral, institutional, and we are in the process now of appointing a task force that will work for about six months to try to take a head start on what to do next. It's something that takes a lot of study, thank you for reinforcing that. Town Manager Miller, you want to add?
Thank you, Mayor, just to share with everyone that the appointment to the Affordable Housing Task Force should be on your work session agenda, so the workforce and discussions around affordable housing will start this summer with the goal of ending their work and discussions by the end of the calendar year, with the, with the goal of really focusing on opportunities and strategies and recommendations to the town council on how can we continue to support and increase affordable housing in our community. So it's great to hear that our residents are in alignment with the priorities of the council.
Thank you very much, thank you. And do we have another person signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the next person is Marsha Timmel.
Yes, if you would approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Marsha Timmel. I live at 105 Wyatt Refuge Lane in Garner, and I'm a longtime resident and a recently retired, long-term teacher at North Garner Middle School. So, looking forward to living out the rest of my retirement here. And I'm grateful, too, that you are taking up this issue with the task force. I don't know if a retired teacher can be of any use to you, but I have worked with the homeless for almost fifty years, so if there's anything I can contribute, let me know. I'm here because the face of homelessness is changing in the United States, in North Carolina, in Wake County, and yes, even here in Garner, it's rearing its ugly face, and that face is aging. As recently as 1990, only eleven percent of the homeless in the U.S. were over the age of fifty, and that was eleven percent too many. By 2003, this percentage had spiked to thirty-seven percent, and since then, it has continued rising steadily to its current rate, forty-four percent of the homeless in the U.S. are over the age of fifty. Now, this is not just the natural aging of the previously younger homeless people. Of the forty-four percent of the homeless who are over the age of fifty, forty-one percent of them have never been previously homeless. Dr. Margot Kuschel, who has been studying this aging of the homeless since the early 2000s, has identified some important differences in this older population. What she did not find prevalent were any large representations of mental illness, substance abuse, or a history of imprisonment. Your elderly homeless are different. Instead, she found these people tend to be the working poor, the backbone of Garner, I think we would all agree, generally with low-paying, physically demanding jobs that they have worked their whole lives. They hang on by their fingernails to their housing, knowing that they are only one crisis away from losing their home. Living month to month is exacerbated by the lack of affordable housing in Garner. I think I bought the last affordable house, and it's becoming unaffordable now. That's because of ironically, the rising values of existing houses. Now, I have seen the value of my own home triple since 2017, and while on paper, this may look like a great accumulation of wealth, in reality, not a penny of this value has hit my bank account yet, I'm waiting. What has happened is that my mortgage, which was supposed to be fixed at an affordable $680 a month when I retired, has risen all the way to $825 per month, due entirely to the inflation of property taxes and insurance rates because of the rising home value. I've been fortunate to have a local businessman, Matt Davis of our local State Farm Insurance, working with me and helping with me to try to bring that insurance down, but it means sacrificing a safety net, so I will be one crisis away from losing my home. So, in the meantime, state retirement, state retirees have not had a cost of living adjustment since 2017, and since 2009, we've only had a three percent increase, while at the same time, the Consumer Price Index has increased thirty-eight percent. That means we're thirty-five percent behind the inflation we have. Whereas seven years ago, I was only having to spend twenty-five percent of my monthly income on housing, today, that amount has risen to over thirty-three percent. This continual rising is not sustainable. Garner cannot continue to turn its back on the housing crisis impacting our seniors, because that's not the way Garner behaves. We have always cared for our most vulnerable and honored our elders. Raleigh is beginning to implement serious structural support for affordable housing, as is Cary. Garner's citizens deserve no less, and I know that we can lead the way if we only try. Thank you for forming this task force to begin this complicated, confusing process.[1172.33][1172.33](applause)
Yeah, thank you very much.[1178.33][1178.33](applause) Thank you for your insightful and heartfelt comments, and again, our task force certainly is charged with that. I'm also proud to say that in Garner, we have one of the, it's been recognized as one of the very best in the state, year after year, senior center, and it's not just for having fun and lunch, it has resources to help you deal with some of those issues. Here in Garner, we also have at least four outstanding senior housing facilities that are income-based, where people can get a little help, and this is a thing we want to encourage and do more of. Anything else to add, Town Manager Miller? Okay, well, thank you for that comment, and I'm calling our town attorney, we have another speaker.
Yes, the third speaker is Katie DeCardenas.
Yes, ma'am, if you would introduce yourself with your address for the record.
Thank you for listening and for your attention, my name is Katie DeCardenas, 1609 South Wade Avenue, Garner, North Carolina. Again, regarding our affordable housing, I think it is wonderful that we're starting a task force, I think it's also really important that we start working now, not waiting until December, because even tonight, there are thirteen hundred units that we're looking at. Possibly approving a thousand units every meeting is going to not help us if we start making a plan in December. So as we consider the many developments that are asking to impact our community, I would like to share with you something that I have learned recently about housing affordability. Greg Colburn, author of Homeless is a Housing Problem, distinguishes clearly between the individual risk factors that we often focus on that impact housing stability and structural risk factors. Often, community leaders and developers do not realize that their responsibility is to focus on the structural risk factors. Structural factors like high rents and low vacancies, as well as lack of access to housing for the lowest-income earners, creates instability for our community. Economists study the structural risks because it is how development creates conditions for the demise of affordable housing. For example, if a community doesn't consider the data of how many units at each level of our income levels are available before we allow new developments to come in, and if we have no guidelines or regulations or restrictions, we will keep driving the AMI up and pushing out longtime residents who start at maybe at eighty percent, and as their salary stays the same and new people come in, they're pushed down to thirty percent. Amila Sutton is the new Raleigh Housing and Neighborhoods Director in charge of the five million dollar bond that the City of Raleigh just approved to address homelessness, points out that the data that for every hundred-dollar increase in rent, there is a ten percent increase in homelessness. That's a serious amount of money if you think about how much rent has gone up in the last couple of years. We do not want to grow a housing, a homelessness crisis, we want to address a housing crisis. It is important to understand that workers need housing security. If we take pride in bringing Amazon and retail stores to our community, then we need to take enough pride in the workers to ensure that they have housing. Workforce housing is a term that you'll hear from HUD, that is for eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, according to HUD. If the median income for Garner is $77,000, that wouldn't account for the Amazon worker who earns nineteen dollars an hour, or $38,000 a year. They would be able to afford, or they would be earning $3,000 a month. If you do the math, they can't afford to eat and rent in our community. The average healthcare, childcare worker makes $25,000 a year, and the average firefighter in Wake County makes $37,000 a year. The North Carolina Coalition's 2024 Wake County Needs Report indicates that forty-six percent of renters have difficulty affording their houses at this point. Wake County ranks number seventeen in our state for evictions in the whole state, and Johnston County rates, ranks twenty-eight. So, our Town of Garner represents number seventeen and number twenty-eight of evictions. If we don't consider housing affordability, we're pushing out people that have lived here with us. So as we talk to developers, I just ask that you would keep in mind the importance of housing affordability for those who live here, serve here, and are community members that are important to keep our community working well. So thank you for your attention.
And thank you very much for your observations.[1500.65][1500.65](applause) Again, extremely important issues, thank you for your input, we may be calling some of you for some more information, some more ideas as our task force pushes ahead. Okay, we'll try to get back on track here, we need to adopt the agenda, I'll ask the council members for motion and a second to adopt this agenda.
So moved.
So, Mr. Elmo moves, and Ms. Behringer seconds, all in favor of adopting this agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, passes unanimously, and that takes us past the presentations, over to the consent agenda, and this is a large number of items that have been studied by council members and staff over the last few weeks, combined here to be consently approved en masse unless some council member wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda. Is there any item to be removed? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Singleton, and seconded, I think, by Mr. Vance. Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, passes unanimously, thank you. And now, we will move along to some public hearings, and I also need to remind everyone that this first public hearing is a legislative hearing, which does not require the sworn testimony. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town attorney. And this, and the first one, which is Homestead at Bryan Farm, the applicant has requested, I understand, continuance until our July 16th meeting, is that right, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, there's a request to continue, I don't know if the applicant wants to say anything.
Okay, okay, no other comments, thank you, thank you for taking your time, this is serious business, we want to get this right, you have a wonderful spot out there across from the high school, laden with history and perfect location, thank you for taking your time, bringing your best game when you come. So, if there's no objection, we'll just let that one continue till next time. Do I get a consensus to let that continuation run?
Yes.
Okay.
You need to do a motion to continue it to a date and time certain, so the motion needs to be to continue it to July 16th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay.
So moved, second.
There's a move by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Ms. Behringer, to formally continue this until July 16th.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, thank you, boy, we got good consensus going tonight, let's see how long that lasts.[1675.21][1675.21](laughter) Let's, let's jump into the, the next public hearing, this is for a special use permit, this is a little different, this is for the Bennett Assemblage Apartments North, and this case involves an application for a special use permit, which requires a quasi-judicial hearing, this is a little different. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, had any ex parte communications, any close familial, business, or other associational relationships with an affected person or financial interest in the outcome of the case. We haven't heard any of that, okay? This is a- So if there's no objection, we'll just let that one continue till next time. Do I get a consensus to let that continuation run?
Yes.
Okay.
You need to do a motion to continue it to a date and time certain. So the motion needs to be to continue it to July sixteenth at six P.M.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
There's a move by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Ms. Behringer to formally continue this until July the sixteenth.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Thank you. Boy, we got good consensus going tonight. Let's see how long that lasts. Let's jump into the next public hearing. This is for a special use permit. This is a little different. This is for the Bennett Assemblage Apartments North. And this case involves an application for a special use permit, which requires a quasi-judicial hearing. This is a little different. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, had any ex parte communications, any close familial business, or other associational relationships with an affected person or financial interest in the outcome of the case. We haven't heard any of that. This is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to the impacts of property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members must disclose discussions pertaining to the case or any information received outside of the hearing. The property was considered at prior council meetings in conjunction with rezoning and special use permit decisions. Do any council members have any additional disclosures of ex parte communications on this case? Hearing none, that's good. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk, and those wishing to testify, including the applicant, if you would, please proceed to the back corner of the room to be sworn in. Okay. I'll also take this opportunity to point out that the staff report is offered as evidence in the case and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person with standing. And our presenter from the staff on this project tonight is our Development Review Manager, Ms. Allison Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present Bennett Assemblage Apartments North. The applicant, RST Development, along with the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Trezenburg. We're experimenting with new microphones, and where everyone needs to be proactive in addressing the microphone closely, and our technicians in the bomb shelter over there are adjusting the meters as we go. So try again, Ms. Jones, thank you.
I think it made it through. There we go. Sounds a whole lot better to me. All right. Excuse me. I'll start over. The applicant is RST Development. The owner is Bennett Land, North Carolina. They have, excuse me, the applicant has submitted a request of special use permit to establish a development for multifamily apartment living on nine-point-eight-six acres. This portion of the project, as you can see, I'll show you here, the actual parcel is outlined with the blue, excuse me, the red dot is. However, this is just a portion of the project area that we will be discussing tonight. The site is located at seven-one-hundred Fairway Road. The zone is multifamily B. It's conditional use zoning. The land was rezoned with a tier-two zoning case back in August of 2022. The project received rezoning in, excuse me, August. Excuse me. The area is a mix of RA and MFB surrounding zone districts. Water is available, and it's also a sewer. And one thing to keep in mind about this project, the other area that I mentioned before is the subdivision portion of this project, and the subdivision portion of this project will include all the infrastructure for the apartments project. The rezoning permits up to two-hundred-eighty apartment units. For the multifamily area of this project, there's required to have a minimum of three-thousand-square-foot clubhouse, a minimum of twenty-five-hundred-square-foot pool, and these amenities must be completed within eighteen months of the first building permit being issued for said apartment building. There's a few other architectural zoning conditions. There's not to be any vinyl siding. For the windows, there must be an embellish or a one-by-four casing around the windows. Each building will have some type of plane to offset the building. The accessory buildings must have masonry as well. This is an overview of the comp plan. Just keep in mind that this comp plan was approved after this rezoning was approved for this project area. And it does not fall within activity center, however, it is within the neighborhood. I can't remember this word. Tapology. Thank you. Never get it right. And it's level area, excuse me, level two, an area that needs to be strengthened. There were thirty-four property owners notified.
Say better.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm gonna get it right before it's over with.
I think we might have needed to get you a taller, a taller microphone. Real serious. I'm not joking, I mean, really.
Could this, oh.
When you close it, it's fine.
I forgot about this part. Thank you, Garner. This is how it goes. How about this? Better? All right.
Yes.
Okay, okay, try it again. Okay, thirty-four property owners were notified. The neighborhood meeting was held on May twenty-fourth of this year at the Garner Senior Center. Three people attended. The full neighborhood meeting information was included in your packet. And here's just an overall site. One building here, one building here. Here is your pool and your clubhouse area, some open space area down here as well. And these two buildings right here are the garage buildings. And just to give you a better overall of the entire site that I mentioned before about the subdivision, so this right here is your subdivision. This is a mix of single-family and townhomes, and these, this dark down here is the apartment community area. The open space, required to have almost an acre of open space. They're preserving of, excuse me, not preserving, but they have just over two acres of open space. This is consistent with the zoning conditions and the UDO. The open space amenities will have a dog park, a fire pit, flexible lawn space area, and a barbecue grill, and the clubhouse. And additional plantings will be along US four-oh-one, too, as well. For stormwater for this project, Bennett Apartments is in the water set protection area. This site is subject to water quality and quantity requirements for nitrogen and total suspended solids for your one-tier, one, ten, and twenty-five-year storm events. As I mentioned before about the subdivision, the subdivision portion also has some stormwater ponds that will also treat some of this runoff from the project, from this project area. So with all three of those ponds, they will satisfy the water quality and TSS, the total suspended solids, and quantity requirements for the one, ten, and twenty-five-year storm events. This project will also require a nitrogen offset payment, too, as well. The landscaping buffers, this project is surrounded by roads, so typically, we'll have perimeter buffers, but this project does not have any perimeter buffers. So all of the street trees will be provided every forty feet as required. They're required to have a minimum of fourteen percent of tree coverage. They are providing fifteen-and-a-half percent. Lighting was reviewed by staff and is also in accordance with the UDO and policies that we have in place. Parking requirements, just wanted to remind you that this project was reviewed under the previous UDO, so the parking requirement's a little different than it were, than it are now. For one bedroom, there is one-and-a-half spaces required. For two-bedroom, two spaces. And for three-bedroom, they're required to have two-and-a-half spaces. The minimum required parking spaces are four-hundred-and-two. They're proposing three-hundred-and-five. The previous UDO allowed for up to twenty-five percent reduction, and by Article seven-point-four-C, I believe, but they're requesting a fifteen percent reduction. The fire department, along with inspections, has reviewed this project, and they feel as though that all emergency vehicles can get in and out of this area safely. This site will be served by the City of Raleigh Water and Sewer. There's a sixteen-inch water main that's along Fairway Road, and then they will tap into the eight-inch sewer main that's in four-oh-one exchange and bring it on up that There's some road improvements along this project. There will be road improvements along US four-oh-one to construct the additional lane and a ten-foot multi-use path along the frontage. There will also be a seventy-five-foot modern collector road that will be constructed along the southern portion of the project that will provide a future connectivity to Lake Wheeler Road. And immediate drive access to the site will be a seventy-five-foot modern collector road. Along the west side of the project, there will be a fifty-five-foot modern collector road. Again, as I mentioned before, these improvements will be part of the subdivision portion that has to be done before this can start, this portion can start. A TIA was completed and approved with the rezoning case. This portion of the project site does not have any FEMA floodway or any environmentally sensitive areas on here, and we did not find any cultural resources being identified on this project area either. And here are just some elevations of the proposed buildings. See the offsets up here? This is your garage down here. And no vinyl. So after reviews and meeting with the project team, staff finds as long as these conditions are met, that this project is in policy to be approved. So prior to issuance of building permit, the infrastructure from Bennett Assemblage Subdivision Plan that was approved on the fifteenth of December in 2023 must be completed before the work on the apartments building, I mean apartments portion can be started. Project issuance of building permit and petition must be submitted to the planning department. The lot must be a lot of record. The payment to the engineering department for inspection fees, the payment to the engineering department, excuse me, proof of payments to the engineering department that the nitrogen offset payment has been made. And maintenance plan, along with the memorandum agreement for the stormwater control measures, must be recorded with the Wake County Register D's prior to construction, draw approval. And construction drawings must be submitted to the city, excuse me, to the engineering department. The infrastructure construction drawings from City of Raleigh must be received and recorded with the Wake County Register D's office, and they may also must submit construction drawings to the City of Raleigh, too, for all public water and private sewer extensions. That is the end of staff's project, excuse me, presentation. I'm here for questions. The applicant is here, too, as well. If you have any questions for them.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Gupta, Mayor Proton Vance, and members of the town council. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at seven-hundred West Main Street in Durham. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant to present evidence in support of its application for site plan approval for a residential apartment community with a total of one-hundred-seventy-seven apartments. As has been mentioned, this property is on about nine-point-eight-nine-five acres in size, and the property is Zone MFB CE two-forty-nine. It is on the east side of four-oh-one, across from Athensville Drive. The plan before you today will implement the northern multifamily portion of that zoning. It's a small portion of the overall zoning. Just to refresh your memory, the zoning allows for a maximum four-hundred-sixty-three units, including single-family, townhomes, and apartments. This plan is for one-hundred-seventy-seven apartment units. I do have an exhibit packet for you, and at the outset, I would like to ask that all exhibits relied upon or referred to by our witnesses be moved into the record as evidence for this, including the staff report, all its attachments, our site plan, and all of our application materials. Further, I would like to tender our expert witnesses for the hearing. We have a few, and I have their resumes in this packet. We have Ms. Allison Stone and Mr. Tim Hess, project managers for the project from the Timmons Group. We have Mr. Cliff Lawson, also from the Timmons Group. He's on the traffic side. We have Mr. Rich Kirkland, a real estate appraiser, and Mr. Brian Driscoll, who is the project's architect. Also in this packet of documents is a portion of the TIA and the appraisal report, which I'd like to enter into the record as well. It's appropriate, I'll just bring you a copy. Should take one to the clerk back there.
You can give them both to me.
Okay, all right.
All right, we can do that.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, should I just give that a moment to enter that something to evidence and accept those expert witnesses? Or I can continue on?
You can continue.
Okay. Perfect. We also have Mr. Danny Copeland, who's a representative from the applicant group. So our witnesses will put forth the testimony related to the findings of fact that you all must make. I would just ask if you have any concerns about a given fact, or you give us an opportunity to explain how the project meets standard before you vote tonight, because we're confident that the project does meet all standards. So I'll call up our first witness, that's Mr. Tim.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Timothy Hess. I'm a senior project manager, land plan planner, landscape architect with the Timmons Group. The Timmons Group is located at fifty-four-ten Trinity Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. In nineteen-eighty-three, I was a graduate of the North Carolina State University School of Design with a master's in landscape architecture. I have been registered as a professional landscape architect in the state of North Carolina for thirty-eight years. Twenty-five of those years, I had my own landscape architecture and planning firm. I've been the lead professional on this project for the multifamily portion of this project through this stage of the design and approval process. The plans before you tonight substantially are complete after several rounds of review with the town professional planning staff. To my knowledge, all technical review comments have been addressed at this point, so the plans are ready for your approval. And as a first finding of fact, you all must make that the plan complies with the appropriate provisions of the UDO. As noted in the staff report, materials, and combined through this review process, the development will comply with the town's requirements. Another item I want to touch base upon is the compatibility of the site with the uses of the surrounding area. Fairway Road is a major collector with a significant amount of daily traffic. While there are scattered single-family homes along the quarter, most existing uses are commercial, and nature and future development is planned. Across the highway, there's a townhouse, single-family community with a multifamily component, which is currently being developed. So there is residential in the area. This site is a small part of the larger residential community, as noted before. Our firm is also designing the preliminary plan approval subdivision of the rest of this assemblage, and we are currently preparing the construction documents for submission to the town for that part of the project. So it is tracking ahead of the apartment plan. So it is tracking ahead of the apartment plan in front of you tonight. I think the plan of the overall community paints a more complete picture. The master plan for this, uh, envisions a transition of uses and density with the more intense, higher density apartments up front along the highway and less intense, lower density, uh, townhouses and single-family units further west from the highway. Transitioning, transitioning uses densities, use densities gradually across the site considered a best practice in land planning. And the site plan implements that practice. Additionally, the overall community provides access points to the adjoining parcels to the north, south, and west. Another way in which the plan is designed in context to sensitivity is by setting the buildings back a minimum of sixty-five feet from the highway, providing vegetative buffer in that area. Additionally, the site is designed so that views to large expanses of surface parking lot. Our parking lots are blocked from the right of way by intervening buildings. And there's a grade change that will be developed between, uh, four oh one and the buildings. So the buildings will sit lower than four oh one. These factors should create an aesthetically pleasing view from the corridor. Additionally, to ease the burden of four oh one, there are three access points to provide the site, which are located off the two associated, uh, four oh one access roads. One is along the road to the north and the two other entrances are provided on the road to the west with no direct access to the apartments off of four oh one. Fire access has been noted for the site, the site has been reviewed and approved by town staff. Therefore, my unprofessional opinion, the community will be compatible with the surrounding area. Open space is provided throughout the entire project. But specific to the apartments, there are seven distinct open space areas included. The townhouse of over seven thousand square feet, which is more than twice the size required for the zoning, a pool, an open park, a dog park, a sidewalk path along four oh one, picnic shelters, grills, fire pits, multi-use lawns, and walking trails. A pretty extensive list of amenities just within the apartment complex development law, which meets the open space requirements on its own standalone project. In fact, the open space on the apartment site is more than double what is required. Uh, like any apartment community, the open space areas and amenities will be maintained by the ownership group. And just to touch on the tree cover that is being provided throughout the community through preservation of existing trees in the greater community along the boundaries and site, there, we will have extensive street tree coverage as well as coverage within the community. From an environmental standpoint, there is no FEMA floodplains on this site. And store, as noted before, stormwater for the site is being managed by surface stormwater ponds, control measures that are associated with the townhouse and single-family community. Finally, the last thing I want to touch base on is the town's ability to service the area. This area is across four oh one from the existing corporate limits of the town. So emergency service departments already drive the property, close by, by the property in normal course of business. This project will not create an island of municipal services. The site is served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer. The water will connect to and extend from the existing lines in four oh one. Sewer will be collected on, at an onsite pump station, which is located in the northwest corner of the site and conveyed to a force main and to gravity lines on the other side of four oh one. Access to the pump station for the properties to the west, south, and north are being provided. In my professional opinion, the proposed project will not create a danger to the public. It is harmonious with the surroundings and is consistent with the U D O and comprehensive plan. And the plan has met all the requirements for approval tonight. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions for me, I would welcome them at this time or we can wait till a later date after the presentate, other presentations.
Thank you. And our next witness then will be Mr. Cliff Lawson.
Testing. Can you hear me? All right, good. All right. Good evening. My name is Cliff Lawson. I'm a transportation engineer with the Timmons Group located at twelve oh one Main Street, Columbia, South Carolina. I received my bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from North Carolina State University in two thousand and ten. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina since two thousand and sixteen. I've also been a professional traffic operations engineer, uh, since two thousand and twenty. Uh, as you're aware, Timmons Group was engaged by the developer to conduct the traffic, a transportation impact analysis for this project. Before I jump into T I A, I wanted to touch on some quick items related to the plan itself. Though, as mentioned earlier, the overall project will have three points of access to U S four oh one. But this apartment site is flanked by two of those entry points. These are right, these are right out only onto southbound four oh one. Sidewalks will be provided on both sides of all streets. The transportation plan calls for Fayetteville Road to be a six-lane divided highway. Improvements to this section of Fayetteville Road are being completed as part of the development of the single-family and townhomes on the remainder of this site. The T I A was prepared by Timmons Group, uh, sealed February of two thousand and twenty-two and when it was approved by the N C D L T on March of two thousand and twenty-two. I did want to say that I personally did not complete the T I A. I'm here on behalf of my colleague Jeff Holkenau, um, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question.
Yes, sir.
A reference to the access off the four oh one, I, I mentioned, I heard mentioned three access points.
Yes, sir.
Into the, into the project itself.
Yes, sir.
How would you access it from four oh one? Can, can put the site plan up?
So looking at the two northern access points, south access. Okay, all right. So looking at the two northern access points, you, if you're traveling southbound, you'll be. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the two, two side access points off of you.
Okay, north is to your right on the project. Um, there is a, uh, surface road that comes in off of four oh one at that location. On the other side of the apartment complex, there's another access. And then there's a third access that will ultimately be put in also. Uh, the two that are being, um, addressed, uh, for the apartment complex are the north and the middle sites. Presently, they are right in, right out only. And then there's a turnaround if, if you'll, you can't quite see it, but further up south, there is a, um, U-turn area.
For the south of it.
For, for the south, yeah, heading for.
Okay, okay. So two access points off of four oh one onto the, uh, to the project.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Both right in, right out, that, that will utilize U-turn points outside the site.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
And our next witness will therefore be Mr. Rich Kirkland.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state certified general appraiser. Been appraising in the area of the triangle for about twenty-eight years. Uh, we regularly do impact analysis as part of our, um, ongoing business practice. Uh, I also have my M A I through the Appraisal Institute, which, um, this comes from advanced studies through the Appraisal Institute and peer review process. Um, I received my M A I in two thousand and one. Um, we were asked to look at this project about impacts on adjoining property values. To do that, we have done a pair of sales analysis looking at homes in proximity to apartments. And really, this development is making sense. It's coming out of a parent triangle. The, all the adjoining uses around this is really going to be vacant land that's for future development for single-family housing. But the, and, and also related ownership, the land across four oh one is townhomes and apartments. So again, um, it's passed across the street from a divided highway. So we don't have any specific concerns, but we still went through and did a pair of sales analysis looking at homes in proximity to, uh, these types of developments to see where, where things would be as far as this future development goes. We looked at a number of similar apartment projects around here. We looked at, uh, Green Bright Apartments, Bryant Woods, Evolve, Villages of the Colors Walk, Marquee Station, and Meridian and Broad Street, just looking to see where apartments are in comparison to adjoining townhomes and single-family. Um, some of these were reused just for department, apartment use to measure how distant, how distant these uses are apart from each other. Another were used for pair of sales to look at home sales to see if there's any impact on property values. Um, the data we presented and sent to report, we're not seeing any impacts on property values. I accepted one instance, and that was where a home was less than a hundred feet from adjoining apartments. Uh, none of the homes at this location would be as close as that. The, those roads that we were just talking about on either side are really separating this from the future development of this project. So it, it's my professional opinion that the project as proposed will have no, uh, negative impact on adjoining property values. And furthermore, that this is a harmonious location. It's very similar to the uses across four oh one. It's similar to these other projects that we've looked at. We have to go into greater detail or answering questions, but, um, again, those are my professional opinions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. And so at this time, I would once again just like to make sure that we move into evidence on the exhibits relied upon.
I'm sorry. I wanted to provide a point of clarification regarding your site access question. Uh, the northern access would be right in, right out. The southern access, which is the middle access, um, being structured now would be right in, right out with a leftover off of four oh one into the site.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. And again, this is Neil Gosh, attorney for the applicant, speaking once again. Sorry about that. So I just want to make sure that we move into evidence on the exhibits relied upon or referred to by the witnesses. And, um, as you know, it's our burden to, uh, submit competent material substantial evidence into the record showing that our proposal meets all of the requirements of the U D O for your approval. And I believe we've done that tonight through the exhibits and testimony of our expert witnesses. Um, our project managers have testified the project is consistent with the U D O, the comprehensive plan, and the surrounding areas. Moreover, it was explained, um, that the project could be serviced by the town while adequately maintaining uh, its ability to service areas within its existing corporate limits. Mr. Lawson reviewed that traffic impact analysis, which considerably estimated the traffic which recently is expected to be, uh, produced by this project, his firm's recommendations on road improvements, if it wasn't clear. Those are all been incorporated into the project before you night in the sense that they are part of the, uh, subdivision that is running ahead of the development of this apartment. So, uh, those, all of those traffic improvements are going to be implemented before this project is going vertical. Um, and as a result, you know, I believe he testified the project will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. And, uh, Mr. Kirkland concluded that the project will not have negative impact on property values. Um, so I think all of that evidence in the record shows that we have met all the requirements for, uh, approval in the U D O. And therefore, we respectfully request your approval of the proposed development. And we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you for your time today.
Okay, thank you. And I'll take this opportunity to ask council members if they have questions for the applicant or our staff. I'll start with Mr. Vance standing at this end.
A question in reference to the reduction of the parking, parking spaces. Can you, uh, someone explained as to how you reached the conclusion to, we reduced about fifteen percent, I think you, I heard.
Fifteen percent reduction, yeah. I'm glad you asked the question. So I think, uh, it's important to note that you guys, you, uh, the town has recently changed its parking code requirement. This, this site plan was reviewed under the previous iteration of the code. The amount of parking that we're providing in this plan is actually consistent with the newest revised version of the U D O. So we're providing, if, if the site plan were reviewed under today's U D O, the parking wouldn't be a redu- a reduced amount. Um, the reduction that we are seeking is based off the market analysis. Um, you know, the, it essentially, and I imagine this is why the town revamped its parking, uh, requirements. The parking requirement in the U D O is probably a little bit too high and the old U D O is probably a little bit too high for what the market actually needs. So you end up with, you know, more parking than more impervious space than is required for the project. The reduction reflects what we believe will be the actual demand for parking, you know, at peak hour times, uh, for this development alone. And again, it's consistent with the newest version of the U D O.
Good, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Gallagher.
I have a couple of questions. Just follow up on the parking. Did you want to be evaluated on new U D O or the old U D O?
We are being evaluated on the old U D O. The old U D O does allow for a fifteen percent reduction.
And so did you, you went through the process of the reduction that's outlined in the old U D O to get to that reduction number?
Correct.
Because there was four hundred and you asked for a percentage. I saw twelve percent reduction in the public meeting or the neighborhood meeting, and then fifteen was referenced as regards to what was submitted to the town.
Uh, I can't speak to, to the twelve percent. I mean, it's a fifteen percent reduction. That's what was, yeah.
Fifteen, twelve was in the record for the neighborhood meeting.
Understood.
I have a question about the architectural renderings. What's the, the basis for those renderings?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question. Could you clarify?
The renderings are formed through the conditions that are side to side, correct?
Sure, the, 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 are, the elevations for the buildings are in large part driven by the zoning conditions? I think that's what you're asking? Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
So I've got real concerns on the, as an architectural and aesthetic concerns with the product. It's inconsistent with McCullers, which is across the road. It's inconsistent with four oh one assemblage in terms of aesthetics. Um, it's inconsistent with the commercial aesthetic, aesthetics of the commercial to the south. Um, and we've seen, uh, this similar type product. It does not look good when it comes out of the ground. I also have a question as to the height. I see you've got three stories, not four. Why not four stories?
Uh, let me see if there is someone on our team who can answer that question specifically.
You can have the same number of units and just go more vertical. It's not a density issue.
Three stories versus four stories, I think. Yeah, yeah.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah.
No, it was not sworn in. You can, you can get sworn in. Can we have this, uh, this witness sworn in?
And for the record, I'm bringing the concern up under condition five for the special use permit that is compatible with adjacent uses of proximate neighborhoods.
And while he's getting sworn in, were there other, uh, questions?
It's really a height, a height question because I have some accessibility questions.
Okay.
Good evening. Scott Copeland, principal of R S T Development, the developer and the applicant. Um, regarding the height, um, we, uh, we chose to go with this product from a density standpoint and trying to maintain the, the relationship to the parking, obviously higher, more density. Um, we didn't want to go with the structured parking.
Not necessarily more dense. If you go more vertical, you just go more vertical with the same number of units, you have same parcels. The density doesn't necessarily change in verticality, correct?
It may or may not. Correct, yeah, correct. It doesn't have to. But this is, this is the layout that, that we designed on the project. This is a product that we've had success with, and this is a product that we, we've chosen to, to put on the site.
Yeah, and I see, I guess, a lot of product coming around in Wake County, even in Raleigh, right across on Tryon Road. You're two miles from five forty, correct?
Correct.
It would seem that a four-story or ho- or taller structure would be supported by the market, correct?
I, 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 we, we, we designed a product that we feel very comfortable with. Uh, to be there, it happens to be a three-level product and, and, and that's, I'm not sure there was a requirement to go higher than that.
And just one more question, then I'll pass to the questions. If I'm in a wheelchair, how do I get to the second and third story?
All of our A D A required, all of our A D A units will be on the first floor.
So if I'm in a wheelchair or I have a friend or family that's in a wheelchair, they're not going to be able to reach me if I'm on the second or third floor?
That is correct. It's a walk-up building.
All right, that's an solid question.
I, I, I would like to state though, that we are in full compliance with all fair housing and A D A requirements.
Uh, no more questions right now.
Mr. Behringer, questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment that it concerns me too that, um, that there are no elevator access even though it may not be required. Um, if we're talking about affordable housing and we're talking about special needs people. Um, if we're talking about affordable housing and we're talking about special needs people, um, we need to do a little bit better job of making the upper-level apartments accessible.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Matthews, questions, comments?
I just got some same concerns that my colleagues had uh in regards to um uh, I, you know, when you're looking at three and four levels, those elevators are important, even though you're compliant at the first level, who knows what could happen down the road second. Um, I like to see some more uniqueness about it because we we meet with all of our developers ahead of time, i- if they would like, we do these things, what we call a two-on-one. And one thing that comes up is is this kind of, is this the best you can bring to the table, you know, far as uh a project that you will be totally proud of and you would recommend and we could refer people to. So uh, uh, just got some concerns about the overall looks of the project. And that's it all at this time.
Mr. Singleton, here.
Well, I'll follow up with what they said also. I believe in the census, uh, the fastest-growing age group in Garner was over 55 or over 60. So those people would probably appreciate elevators also. Now, I know your project is a little different than some apartment complex we apartment complexes we give because you have two buildings, just two. Um, I've often wondered with multiple buildings, why people don't go four stories and make a nice big green space? But anyway, your your project's a little bit different, so I'll uh say that point, but I'll I'll concur with the elevator concerns also.
Okay, uh, so that's questions from the council and our presentation by the applicant. I think at this point, we'll call on any members of the public uh who want to speak before, do we have some sign up?
The only other person on the sign-in sheet is Brenda Compton. I'm not sure if she wants to speak.
Was there another person signed up?
No, it was Ms. Compton has declined declined to speak. She indicated she might only ma- maybe speak.
Okay. Uh, are there any other comments from staff to address any of the questions the council had brought up, any further comments? Okay.
I have a question for for staff on the architectural guidelines. I know that there was part of this is another, part of another rezoning, and I know we've had a lot of conversations around um architectural standards and 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 fit for different parts of of Garner. And I guess uh my question is, based on sort of the feedback that we've given to staff over the past several months with regards to product type and quality and aesthetic, are, is that sufficiently captured in the existing conditions? I didn't see a lot of architectural conditions that would be uh include a lot of those changes. So can you speak to whether it's met this sort of higher standard or or is this sort of an older project that is coming back to us?
Yeah, this 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 project is, I've never come through that loud. Uh, yeah, this project was approved back in the late summer of 2022, and it was really right after that that we started having more of these discussions about elevators, fourth floors and and such. So I think it largely is just a happenstance of timing.
Yes, uh, a question for the staff in reference to in reference to the ADA accessibility and the review process. Uh, can you go through that, uh, explain the process of ensuring that projects are ADA accessible and through your review process?
Um, in planning, we don't review for ADA, but when it gets to the building permit review, our building inspection staff reviews and uh takes care of that part.
Okay, the applicant wants to explain?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So uh, you know, our building is consistent with ADA requirements, fair housing law, and building code. So with the three-story building, um, every unit on the first floor is able to be uh a an accessible unit. That doesn't necessarily mean all of them are, but they're able to be uh converted into that. The in a three-story building, the second story and third story are not required to be accessed um for from ADA now to four-story building, that's where the elevator requirement comes in, and you have greater ADA requirements and, you know, from building codes perspective. So the project, as a three-story building, meets all the requirements for ADA, fair housing, and building code.
Next question in reference to the, you mentioned elevators, and elevators, the requirement for elevators come in at four stories?
Four stories.
And this is?
Four habitable stories, I should say.
I'm sorry?
Four habitable stories.
Okay, got you. And if and be and if it doesn't, if you don't have, you can put them in at three stories, but it it's up to the developer to do that, but not required to do that?
That's correct, yeah. That's that's a fair statement, yes.
Yes, okay.
I'll just go on the record and say it's inherently discriminatory and against our comp plan to not have elevators and make your product accessible to everyone. I don't care about the building code. I think when you're looking at our comprehensive plan that we've adopted, old and new, they're about community and accessibility for everybody. We are working on a project with a developer. They're doing 24 units in downtown Garner, a three-story building, retail on the bottom, and they're putting in an elevator because they care.
Yeah. I would say that in this quasi-judicial setting, it's in my understanding that the elevator is not required.
It it's, but it's it's inconsistent with our comprehensive plan and our desire to create housing and a community that is accessible to everyone. That's part of, if you read our U D O and our comp plan, that's what it says. You're going to be fair and accessible to everyone. That's what you need to do.
And I I also just need to go on the record and say that the Fair Housing Act, which relates to housing, specifically is meant to talk, is legislate towards discrimination, rightly. What is discrimination? In a three-story building, which as a practical, I mean, practical reality, three-story buildings are, they exist, and and the, you know, federal law bases is you don't have to have an elevator in that. So that, you know, I don't know that's discriminatory. I mean, specifically, it's not discriminatory, but I understand that that the comprehensive plan is, you know, looking at providing more accessibility. Uh, I can't say that this project provides elevators. I do see that uh Scott is is maybe going to address this for.
May I?
Yes.
I agree with you. And I I feel that we have gotten caught in this time that we have met every obligation that was required to meet. Um, with that being said, we we have a long history of affordable inclusive housing um in other markets. I am willing to put in an elevator in both of these buildings, in a three-story building. It's not going to be a four-story building, but I'm willing to put it in an elevator. It'll probably reduce the number of units because you have to fit it somewhere. But but, you know, we're 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 committed to the community. Th- this matters to us. And so if if we have done these projects that we are proud of, by the way, and we build communities, we provide services for our residents, we are long-term owners of these projects. This is a family business. This matters to us. So we follow the rules that are provided to us. We don't make them. We tirelessly follow them to the letter, to the spirit, to the whole thing. If I don't know that your U D O encourages that, if that's not a requirement that is put down for me in my countless reviews with staff, it's hard for me to meet something I don't know. With that being said, because this does matter to us, and we are members of the community, I will provide, and I'm happy for this to be conditioned, that I do add elevators to these, both of these buildings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, if I may, um, I'll share something with you guys and because obviously, we don't want to be the bad guys. We want you to have a great presentation and be successful at what you do, and we want to help you achieve that. Uh, under our new mayor's guidance, we came up with a procedure that I think might help remedy this situation where we do this with near about every developer that's coming in now. They'll come to us ahead of time, they'll meet with staff, and sit down with two councilmen and the mayor and our staff in our conference room, say, here's what we're thinking about doing. You look at it. What do you like? What do you don't like? What'd you like to see us do? Or here's what we can do, here's what we can't do. And the things that we're discussing here tonight are those type of issues, and we try to iron those out, resolve it. If it's an elevator, if it's this, if it's the size of a swimming pool, parking, whatever that case may be, we resolve that really ahead of time. So you guys get a a good fair shake when you come in here. We hear your plan, we know that you've listened to us, and we're all in the same sheet of music, and that's what we want to be. We want everybody to be successful in what they do, uh, but we're doing our due diligence as elected officials, try to make sure we get the best product, and I appreciate your honesty, sir. And uh, there's no doubt you'll build a good product, we just need to kind of iron out some things. My recommendation would be, Mr. Mayor, is if we could hold this tonight in whatever means we need to and set up one of those meetings as quickly as possible with staff or whomever, and then let's sit down and talk about this in detail and see what we can do about working out the details, then make a good presentation. That's just offering it up, and we do this all the time, so.
Can I ask a question, clarifying point on that? Uh, this is a quasi-judicial setting, correct?
Yes, I was um gonna caution council that as a quasi judicial proceeding, um, all the evidence has to be done on the record. So those kinds of meetings that you have on rezoning applications, uh, you would not be able to have in this type of setting. So you can't continue it and then have, um, you could continue it for more of a hearing. You could not have the two-on-two type meetings that you have with some other developers.
I have a question in in terms of addressing that. So now, steering towards some of the architectural and aesthetic concerns, is that an issue that can be taken back to staff for them to formulate additional conditions? Or even that formulation of additional conditions need to happen here?
The quasi-judicial proceeding has to happen before council. If it could be continued and staff could work with the developer to come up with additional conditions.
Yeah, lots of good interaction here, lots of good questions, observations, and I've only been on this job six months, you've been working through this process for two or three years. And what I'm hearing from council members, I think they have higher expectations today than they did two years ago, three years ago. Uh, that we've gone through a U D O change, we focused on the Garner Forward Long-Term Comprehensive Plan that has more visions than building code. U D O, I've been explained to, that's the building code, that's the bare minimum. You have to use boards this big, wire this big, pipes this big, this deep of foundations. But the the long-term comprehensive plan is more a visioning statement. It's what do we want? What do we dream of? What would we want to have here in Garner? What do our citizens deserve? And that's the difference between ADA saying you don't have to have any elevators, but what we believe, as Mr. Damian, as Mr. Gallagher said, uh, our citizens probably like that. Maybe I want to go visit my grandkids who live on the third or the fourth floor, but I just can't make it up four steps, three flights, you know? And so there's, there's a comes a time, and they say, well, yeah, they have exteriors, but do they have colors? Do they have anything attractive? Anything that lifts your spirit when you go by or just another industrial-looking thing that you're on the way to Costco? These these are the questions that the people are asking themselves. And and you're, and as you said so pointedly, sir, you're caught in the process. You started in the old world, and suddenly we're in the new world. Uh, so it it is a dilemma. I don't have the answers. I'm a rookie, but I feel like you want to say something else, and I respect you coming uh as the project owner, so please, share with us.
Thank you very much, and and I urge you all, and I I do understand exactly what you're saying, but we have, we have been struggling to get these approvals for years, for years. And I am a uh an affordable housing developer. I've developed affordable housing for 35 years. This is part of the reason that affordable, that housing is so hard, affordable housing is so hard to build. And the the time, the clock is ticking for me, and I can't afford to wait another six months to get a meeting. I I don't have the financial wherewithal to do it. We have, we have done everything by the book here. We submit immediately. Every plan, every, we respond to every single comment. For me to take a step backwards that will in 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 due process or quickly as you possibly can, if it was tomorrow, it's too long for me. So I would urge you, please, to consider this tonight in the spirit and 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 in the letter of which we have provided, um, with the with the caveat that there will be elevators in this building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? This is related to elevators.
Yes.
Y'all asked for the parking reduction of fifteen percent of 50 uh 57 spaces because it's allowed. You're allowed to ask for that.
Yes, sir.
So at any time in this site plan, it had required 402, and you said 345. At any time, did this have 402 spaces on it? Or did you automatically go for the, do the reduction in building?
Honestly, I don't, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I I'm sure, I think at 405 parking spaces, in my professional opinion, as a developer, it's just overparked. Then you get a sea of, literally a sea of parking and asphalt and spaces that are not used, that I don't think enhance the community whatsoever. Um, so I I'm certain that we probably figured out, you know, that that there was the opportunity to have the reduction. I feel very comfortable with the number of parking spaces as it relates to the number of units of a building.
Do too. I'm not questioning that. My question is, if if for 57 spaces could get eliminated, then it looks like two elevator shafts could get made because that wouldn't take up 57 spaces. That's my whole point. If there was enough, if at one time it had that many spaces on it, then the building could be configured.
Well, I don't, I don't want any pretense that we, that this was designed to be a walk-up project, for sure, when we, when we thought about this a year and two years, three years ago. I I I understand what you're, I've I've heard the speakers tonight. I I am deeply in the inclusive housing space, and I understand what you're doing and what your, what your comments were as it regards to the, the elevator and parking have nothing to do with one another. So I I I.
I'm not questioning the number of space reduction because you're allowed to do that by the U D O. I'm just saying, if that number was on here one day and that space was condensed, it looks like, and I know you should, you'd lose some apartments, that's what I was thinking is, yeah, had the spaces were there, then the spaces were there, and you had space for that apartment, you had space for the elevator, which, I'm just talking about physical space on the footprint. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I I think, I think for the 405 parking spaces, it would have been very difficult to meet all the other requirements with setbacks and open spaces and things of that nature.
That's what I was thinking. It probably, four or five, probably never saw it because of your constraints of your footprint.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay.
Just a comment. I think that um council in the past several months has done an excellent job of handling these sort of things expeditiously in between meetings to get to a resolution that is satisfactory to the applicant and and the council and the public. There are only eight conditions we are at liberty to evaluate. The urgency is not one of them, unfortunately. It's not part of our decision-making process as to how urgent this is for the applicant. It's on these conditions. I think we have demonstrated our ability to act and prioritize timelines to meet the concerns of council and the public. I think that Mr. Matthews' initial inclination of to move, continuing this to another meeting, pairing them with staff so we can quickly get through to, well, quickly communicate it from staff what our expectations are, that we could be back here in in short order and and continue the hearing and come to some decision. And would you, Mr. Matthews, you agree?
Uh, that's, yeah.
Okay, uh, let me ask our attorney here. I'm just reading from the script. It seems that the options we, that the council has before us is either to approve the special use permit with conditions or to deny the special use permit. And I'm hearing now there is a choice that we could continue this hearing uh till the next council meeting if there are some specific questions that want to be addressed by staff. Those are our three choices.
Yes, although if you're going to provide any direction to staff, that would constitute an ex parte communication, which would have to be disclosed at the continuation of the public hearing. So if you have conditions or feedback for the developer, I suggest that you provide it tonight so that the appropriate conditions could be crafted.
I'll make, I'll just make the reference on the record, referencing some of the aesthetic considerations that we have communicated to other developers in recent time so that we get an end product that is. that is congruent with our expectations, and not left ambiguous enough to end up with something we don't want. I think we've done that several times already, so I think staff is comfortable. I'll let Mr. Trezenberg comment on whether or not they're comfortable, and I think they know what our expectations are. But that, for the record, would be the reference point.
For the record, the applicant would like clarification. We don't know what your preference is.
I don't think we want to spend two hours going through what all those changes are. We've got a long agenda, and...
So you're not willing to provide us any direction on what we should be working on as the applicant?
Not during this hearing. We'll connect you with staff, and then they can, very quickly... Or we can vote tonight.
I mean, we feel confident that the project does meet the standards, so I mean...
And then I'll prepare a motion.
One second, I didn't understand what you said just now.
Oh, just now? I mean, we do feel confident that we've put evidence in the record that demonstrates that the project does meet the standards required for approval. If it is, of course, it is the board's prerogative to continue the site. I understand that. If you're going to do that, I'm just asking for some clarification on what it is the applicant's supposed to work on.
I can't... I've repeated it twice. Staff will direct you to staff. They have guidelines that we've already worked on in our previous projects. Or I can make a motion.
We're genuinely trying to help you here. I hope you understand what we're doing. And I understand timelines, but we can make this as expeditious as possible.
To be honest with you, it's not the timeline that I'm concerned about. If you're going to continue it, you're going to continue. I just, I don't even know what we're supposed to work on, other than generally speaking, aesthetics. But that doesn't actually give us any direction. I understand that staff might have in their knowledge base what the preferences are for this group, but we don't. And I don't know if that's quite fair for us to leave this meeting tonight without actually knowing what it's going to take for us to revise our project to get it to a level that would be acceptable to you.
Okay.
It's not that we're not willing to do it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. Can we continue this special use permit hearing to July, what's our July meeting?
Sixteenth.
July 16th.
Okay. There's a motion made to continue this hearing until July 15th, our next regular meeting. Sixteenth. And we want to give some clear guidance between now and then. We're making a motion here. And clearly, we would have to provide clear guidance. I've heard things from aesthetics and color and character that don't seem to be addressed to the council's satisfaction. I hear concerns about elevators and access to the upper floors. And we haven't even mentioned the one that's hot on our wish list or our evaluation list that is part of the comprehensive plan and has been part of the comprehensive plan. It talks about long-term financial sustainability of a particular project based on the tax value of each house or each business or each apartment. We're just in the middle of revising that here in the next week or so, that will give us a better grip. So those are the things that... These have been in the long-term plan for years. They haven't been focused on. Now, are they in the UDO? No. Are they in the vision plan, the long-term comprehensive plan? Yes, they are. Those are the things I'm hearing that council wants to be addressed, along with the motion made by Mr. Dillinger that it be continued to July 16th. So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Singleton. And I think we'll take a roll call vote on this for clarity, quasi judicial. There's a motion that a second to continue this, did you have a 16th meeting?
Discussion. And the motion is being made, but the clarity is not there for the direction that the developer needs to go. We've heard the developer say that they're willing to put in on the, for the three-story apartment buildings, we heard they're willing to make it ADA accessible on the other floors with elevators. They have that much guidance, but they have no other, they have no further guidance. We understand that they have urban design for their apartments, but we haven't given them any specific directions to go in as to what they need to walk away from here with to have, to bring back to us on July 16th or 15th, whatever the next meeting's going to be. So I think it's all fair that we try to provide that guidance, so they can go ahead and start getting, making the necessary adjustments and everything for them, so that they can start working expeditiously, because that's roughly, that's less than 30 days.
So I think the, if I need to include it in the motion, that, I don't think I can with the motion to continue that they meet with staff. I think that, I've said it, how many times have I said you should meet with staff? Like, three times. Staff will reach out to you, or you'll reach out to staff within even 48 hours of this meeting, to engage you on revising and coming up with some of these architectural guidelines that council is interested in. You'll have a month to work on that and come back. And there we are.
Respectfully, I mean, that concept is very easy to understand. I think the part that's giving us a little bit of trouble is, I really have no idea what these particular things are, right? Some of these, some architectural components could cause a complete redesign of the site, not something we can get done in one, just to be clear. So, I mean, without having any kind of background, like, I don't even know...
I understand.
That we are going to be able to achieve...
We seem to be a little circular and repetitive here.
I understand the whole point of continuing the hearing is that you all can have that dialogue and have that conversation to say, we can't do this, or we won't do this, then come back, let us know what you've come up with.
And separately, if the item is continued, I think in fairness, we would like to understand, basically, who do we need to bring back, right? So on the architectural side, I mean, you know, we can bring the architect, we can bring, you know, our civil, right? But like, at the next hearing, have we, do we need to bring the traffic people? Have we satisfied the traffic concern? Do we need to bring the appraiser again? That type of thing. There are a lot of witnesses and professionals that are involved in this. Want to make sure that we're bringing, you know, that we're bringing who needs to be here to answer those questions if you're going to continue the site.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Did you want to amend your motion in any way based on what Mr. Vance had to say or what you...
Other than the expectation is that staff and the applicant will address some of these issues and bring them to your attention. What you don't know now, you will shortly know. And probably the same people you brought tonight, you'll bring back in a month.
You want us to bring everyone back?
I can't tell you who you want to bring back. But I think there's time here to engage with staff again, along with their knowledge of our concerns are, so then you'll know what our concerns are, and you all can reconcile what those are. And if they're not, if it's no change, then you come back with the same project, and we move forward.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Are there any other questions or comments or discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Trezenberg his perspective. Are we making it clear enough to you about what we're interested in so that you can have a conversation with us?
I think based on past conversations, we can certainly convey the bigger picture, which I think some of the things you've actually alluded to tonight. I think we can convey that some fairly sure.
I'd just like to say that in a nutshell, we'd like it to look more appealing.
More?
Appealing, as you ride by. You know, that can be color, it can be signage, but we don't want to cost you a fortune, but we want it to look more like it, that we're happy with it being here.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, well, in that case, we have a motion that a second to continue this to the July meeting with guidance from staff. We'll take a roll call vote. I'll start down here with Mr. Matthews. The motion is made to continue. Is that an aye or a nay?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it seems to be unanimous that this hearing will be continued until the July meeting, and we will provide the best clarity to the developer, to the applicant.
And just for the record, too, because this is an unusual proceeding, to continue the special use permit, any discussions that council members have with staff, the developer, members of the public, need to be recorded as ex parte communications, so that all interested persons can be advised of what those concerns are.
Yes, well instructed, thank you very much. We take that very seriously. Thank you. So that concludes the public hearing. We closed that. We had to vote unanimously, decided to continue that one. And I think 8 o'clock might be a time for a 10-minute break.
Yeah.
Let's do that and be back here at 5 after 8, please. Thank you. Rest in peace.
Goodness.[1242.12]
Goodness.
Okay. Let's reconvene after the recess, thank you for your prompt return and orderly conduct, thank you very much, we will get back to work here on the tier one conditional rezoning at thirty-four twelve and thirty-five oh eight Benson Road, our presenter is Erin Joseph, our assistant planning director, as we continue to adjust our speakers and our microphones, thanks for your patience over there, and if you would, Ms. Jones, help us walk through this, we're not quite as experienced at the tier one zonings as we're used to seeing the tier two zonings, like we saw before with the detailed plans, master plans, so you can kind of step, council and our citizens here and our folks at home, the difference between the tier one, tier two, kind of where we are, the process we're going through.
Yes, sir. I'll be back. All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public, it's very good to be here this evening, I will be speaking to the rezoning request at thirty-four twelve and thirty-five oh eight Benson Road, at the venue preference, this is a tier one rezoning, and what that essentially means is that it's still conditional, the applicant so proffers conditions for the request, however, they have eliminated the requirement of a master plan, so you don't have that illustrative graphic to show you the layout of the rezoning, so what we have is a table of permitted uses that they are offering, as well as written conditions, and that's essentially the biggest difference between a tier one rezoning request and a tier two rezoning.
Okay, any questions from council, Ms. Jones, about the tier one versus the tier three?
Tier two.
Okay, thank you.
Tier two. Yes.
Tier two.
All right, so the applicant, Collier Marsh of Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein LLP, has submitted this request on behalf of the property owners, Crocker Williams Revocable Trust and Elizabeth Revocable Trust CRS-1, this tier one rezoning encompasses forty-nine point one acres, it is approximately two acres, so you, or two parcels, excuse me, so this is the larger area and predominant area to be rezoned, however, there's about a one acre tract just in that corner there, that's thirty-five oh eight, that is also included in this rezoning. The current zoning for the two parcels are Highway District and R thirty Residential, these zoning districts are Wake County zoning districts. And so the Highway District and Residential District intend to accommodate uses that are low density, the HD District does allow residential development, low density residential, but it also has a wide range of non-residential uses that are approved via special use permit. And currently, the site is vacant, predominantly vacant, there's a house structure on the one acre tract. The surrounding zoning is primarily R thirty, but you also have general business, and then you have more of the Highway Business District here, to the north and south of the site. Make sure to skip here, excuse me, I'm sorry. So Benson Road, also NC fifty, is an arterial roadway that connects the core of Garner on its north end and south through rural lands to Ten Ten Road, which is in the Community Activity Center, so you have Ten Ten Road here, this is our Community Activity Center, you have the future five forty, that's proposed just south of this, this area, which is in the Regional Employment Center, Activity Center. The Department of Transportation lasted its traffic count in twenty-twenty-one, and the annual average daily trips was estimated to be at fourteen thousand. Benson Road does have capacity to accommodate growth with continued widening, but it does lack separate infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists. The applicant has requested commercial mixed-use conditional, they have narrowed, narrowed the possible uses to thirty-three out of sixty, and they have proffered thirty conditions outside of the permitted uses. In summary, the architectural, some of the proffered conditions consist of architectural standards for multifamily and the non-residential buildings timely, the multifamily buildings shall have corridors and be elevator served, Area Two shall include a playground unless it is developed for a fifty-five plus community, or age restricted, or group care, and they have also proffered a forty-five foot landscape buffer that shall be provided on the southern boundary where the property abuts the existing single-family residential. A traffic, traffic impact analysis was conducted for this request as a mixed-use development, and I would like to note that at the time of the staff report and the submittal of the presentation, the applicant has updated the traffic impact analysis, so we did receive that today, so the numbers have slightly changed, they have, they were not as significant to alter what the, the suggested improvement, roadway improvements that have been provided by the Congestion Management Unit of NC DOT, so we have on the screen that there are proposed to have four thousand two hundred and fifty-seven average daily trips, the new number per the updated TIA is five thousand five hundred twenty-four, and this update is to reflect that originally this request had a maximum of four hundred and ninety apartments and twenty thousand square feet of retail space, they have increased that to six hundred and fifty maximum apartments and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail space.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Yes, sir, so the initial rezoning application included four hundred, a maximum up to four hundred and ninety apartments and twenty thousand square feet of retail space, they have revised that since their initial submittal to include up to six hundred and fifty apartments and twenty-five thousand square feet of retail space, so the, the traffic impact analysis was updated to reflect that change, and so your numbers are slightly different, however, the...
I have a question, so there's a neighborhood meeting on the twenty-eighth and then of August, and I guess my question is, where, where are these changes in the maximum from four hundred to six fifty and twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand, when were those updates made and communicated to staff in regards to neighborhood meeting and meetings with council, before or after, recently?
I believe it was after the neighborhood meeting, so they have had a total, to my knowledge, three submissions, and they, they submitted their third submission within the last couple of months, is what I believe, so, and they had their neighborhood meeting in Aug- August of twenty-twenty-three, so it was recently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Ms. Joseph, so is the four-two-five-seven the new number, or is that the old number?
That's the old number, because they just submitted their updated TIA, we brought that to their attention in the review of this case, and so it was noted by them, we asked them that to provide an updated TIA, preferably before it's recommended to the Planning Commission, and they provided that today, so the new number is five thousand five hundred twenty-four new one-way average daily trips, the AM peak would be, I'm reading from my notes, so pardon me, please, would be eighty-seven trips in and one hundred and ninety-one trips out for a total of two hundred and forty-one, and with the PM peak hours, two hundred and forty-one trips in, one hundred and sixty-three trips out, for a total of four hundred and four.
So for clarity, they submitted the updated information the day of the public hearing?
Yes. Right, and, and just to clarify, that they, they were made aware of this, I don't think they really picked up on that, that the numbers, until staff reminded them of that, and so we, you know, instructed them, please make sure you update that TIA, so it did come in today.
Thank you.
Well, I will say, at least, there was a project they got approved two weeks ago by a majority of the council, that had six hundred and thirteen apartments and about twenty thousand square feet, and it was fifty-five hundred, so that was the one-on-four-one, fifty-five hundred ADT, so at least they're consistent, we've had some that weren't consistent, and the numbers are almost identical, and the traffic numbers were not even close, thank you for that information.
Yes, sir, and I've just received just information that the applicant, if you will allow, would like to clarify this information that has just come in today to our knowledge, so they would, if, if you, if you would, please, Mayor.
Should we do that now, should you finish the presentation and then we hear from you?
Yes, finish the presentation.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Yes.
So the Congestion Management Unit has identified that there should be a dedicated northbound left turn lane and a taper on NC fifty with a one hundred foot storage at the site at, oops, I'm sorry, at the site access, and also the dedicated southbound right turn lane and taper on NC fifty with a one hundred foot storage at site access as well. Now, as we stated, this is a tier one, so it does not have a master plan, but we would like to highlight the area map so that you have a general idea of how the site may be laid out, and so you have Area One here, eleven point eight acres, and then Area Three and Area Two to the southern boundary, thirty-five oh eight Benson Road will be added to Area Three. Now, reviewing this request, looked at the layering of the Community Activity Center with the mixed-use area, it support, and it does support development that is mixed-use and will serve the broader economic entertainment and housing needs in the community, and this, again, this information, the TIA will be updated, it has been updated, we'll speak to that further, and the neighborhood meeting was conducted in August of twenty-twenty-three, and you do have that information in your packet. As the request was reviewed with the consistency with our comprehensive land use plan, there were eleven growth framework criteria that were evaluated, out of the eleven, eight were strongly consistent, one was split with a modest, and one modestly inconsistent, and one strongly inconsistent, the strongly inconsistent rating was due to the commercial mixed-use district not being listed on the character area crosswalk as a zoning district in that particular typology, as well as the absence of separate infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists, which is a pre-existing condition, so that was the modestly inconsistent rating that was given. Looking at the land use and community character consistency, sixteen criteria were determined to be applicable or possible to be meaningful to address, one strongly consistent, eight modestly consistent, four split, and three modestly inconsistent. Looking at this from an overall perspective, in the absence of any strong non-supporting criteria and a strong level of consistency with the plan's framework, outside of the CMX zoning district and not being in the mixed-use area typology, staff does find an overall finding of consistency at this time. So this is the public hearing, so the next steps that we'll ask is to finish conducting the public hearing and close it, and refer it to the Planning Commission for findings of consistency and recommendation to approve or deny for council, and then returning to council for a decision of approval or denial, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, but again, the applicant is here and they have prepared a presentation that they would like to share as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joseph, if there's no other questions for her, or...
Yes, question, you referenced the TIA that you received today, does, does the staff need to look at that further before proceeding forward, does it need to be, have a staff review before going any further than it is right now?
So I think, again, I think the applicant will clear up some of the timeframe things, it may be something where we just didn't actually receive it in our files, so there may be some confusion there that I would like them to clear up, it's staff, I don't think, in talking with engineering today, I don't think we have any major concerns about it, because again, it doesn't seem that the end result and the recommendations are changing, it, they are different numbers, but the same types of improvements are relevant in either scenario.
Okay, other questions from council, from Ms. Joseph?
Yeah, yeah, two quick ones, one, on the TIA and the increase, you know, it, it's incrementally and it's small, but there's limited bandwidth for other development in that corridor, and so we have to always consider what we're using that bandwidth for, my other sort of question was, with the update of going from a maximum of four hundred units to the six fifty, right?
Yes.
Did they include any voluntary conditions for workforce or affordable units along with that significant increase in units?
No, there are no conditions listed that speak to affordability.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's hear from the applicant.
Before we hear that, I think it's important to realize that four hundred and ninety to six fifty is a thirty-three percent increase in number of units, well, here's an applicant, maybe he can explain that for us.
And for the record, if you would introduce yourself with name and address, please. When were those updates made and communicated to staff in regards to neighborhood meeting and meetings with council? Before or after recently?
I believe it was after the neighborhood meeting. So they have had a total, to my knowledge, three submissions. Um, and they, they submitted their third submission within the last couple of months, is what I believe. So, and they had their neighborhood meeting in Au- August of twenty twenty-three. So it was recently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Ms. Joseph, so is the four two five seven the new number or is that the old number?
That's the old number because um, they just submitted their updated TIA. We brought that to their attention um, in the review of this case. And so um, it was noted by them, we asked them that to provide an updated TIA, um, preferably before it, it's recommended to uh, the planning commission, and they provided that today. So the new number is five thousand five hundred twenty-four um, new one-way average daily trips. The AM peak would be um, I'm reading from my notes, so pardon me please. Um, would be eighty-seven trips in and one hundred ninety-one trips out for a total of two hundred forty-one. And with the PM peak hours, two hundred forty-one trips in, one hundred sixty-three trips out, um, for a total of four hundred and four.
So for clarity, they submitted the updated information the day of the public hearing?
Yes. Right, and, and just to clarify that they, they were made aware of this. I don't think they really picked up on that, that the numbers until staff reminded them of that. Um, and so we, you know, instructed them, please make sure you update that TIA. So it, it did come in today.
Thank you.
Well, I will say at least there was a project they got approved two weeks ago by a majority of the council. They had six hundred and thirteen apartments and about twenty thousand square feet. It was fifty-five hundred. So that was the one oh four oh one, fifty-five hundred ADT. So at least they're consistent. We've had some that weren't consistent. And the numbers are almost identical and the traffic numbers were not even close. Thank you for that information.
Yes, sir. And I've just received uh, just information that the applicant, if you will allow, would like to clarify this um, information that has just come in uh, today to our knowledge. So they would, if, if you, if you would please, Mayor.
Should we do that now? Should you finish the presentation and then we hear from you?
Yes, finish the presentation.
Let's do that.
Okay. So the congestion management unit um, has identified that there should be a dedicated northbound left turn lane and a taper on NC fifty with a one hundred foot storage at the site at, oops, I'm sorry. At the site access. And also the dedicated southbound right turn lane and taper on NC fifty with a one hundred foot storage um, at site access as well. Now, as we stated, this is a tier one, so it does not have a master plan. But we would like to highlight the area map so that you have a general idea of how the site may be laid out. And so you have area one here, eleven point eight acres. Um, and then area three and area two to the southern boundary. Um, thirty-five oh eight Benson Road will be added to area three. Now reviewing this request, looked at the layering of the community activity center with the mixed-use area. It support, and it does support development that is mixed-use and will serve the broader economic entertainment and housing needs in the community. And this, again, this information, the TIA will be updated. It has been updated and we'll speak to that further. Um, and the neighborhood meeting was conducted in August of twenty twenty-three. And you do have that information in your packet. As the request was reviewed with the consistency with our comprehensive land use plan, uh, there were eleven growth framework criteria that were evaluated. Out of the eleven, eight were strongly consistent. One was split with a modest and one modestly inconsistent and one strongly inconsistent. The strongly inconsistent rating was due to the commercial mixed-use district not being listed on the character area crosswalk as a zoning district in that particular typology. Um, as well as the absence of separate infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists, which is a pre-existing condition. So that was the modestly inconsistent rating that was given. Looking at the land use and community character consistency, sixteen criteria were determined to be applicable or possible to be meaningful to address. One strongly consistent, eight modestly consistent, four split and three modestly inconsistent. Looking at this from an overall perspective, in the absence of any strong non-supporting criteria and a strong level of consistency with the plan's framework, outside of the CMX zoning district and not being in the uh, mixed-use area typology, uh, staff does find an overall finding of consistency at this time. So this is the public hearing. So the next steps that we'll ask is to finish conducting the public hearing um, and close it and uh, refer it to the planning commission for findings of consistency and recommendation to approve or deny for council. And then returning to council for a decision of approval or denial. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, but again, the applicant is here and they have prepared a presentation that they would like to share as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joseph. If there's no other questions for her or?
Yes, question. You referenced the TIA that you received today. Uh, does, does the staff need to look at that further before proceeding forward? Does it need to be, have a staff review before going any further than it is right now?
So I think, again, I think the applicant will clear up some of the timeframe things. It may be something where we just didn't actually receive it in our files. Um, so there may be some confusion there that I would like them to clear up. It's staff, I don't think in talking with engineering today, um, I don't think we have any major concerns about it because again, it doesn't seem that the end result and the recommendations are changing. It, they are different numbers, um, but the same types of improvements are relevant in either scenario.
Okay, other questions from council, from Ms. Joseph?
Yeah, yeah, just two quick ones. One, uh, on the TIA and the increase, you know, it, it's, it's incrementally and it's small, but there's limited bandwidth for other development in that corridor. And so we have to always consider what we're using that bandwidth for. Um, my other sort of question was with the update of going from a maximum of four hundred units to the six fifty, right?
Yes.
Did they include any voluntary conditions for workforce or affordable units along with that significant increase in units?
No, there are no um, conditions listed that speak to affordability.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's hear from the applicant.
Before we hear that, there, I think it's important to realize that four hundred ninety to six fifty is a thirty-three percent increase in number of units. Well, here's the applicant, maybe he can explain that for us.
And uh, for the record, if you would introduce yourself with name and address, please.
Good evening, Mary Gopman and members of town council. I'm Mark Frederick with Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein at three zero one Fayetteville Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, and we do have a, a large team here, um, including the applicants, Sal Camerata, Greg Richardson and Jim, Jim Scasima. We also have our civil and transportation engineers with VHB, Charlie Townsend, Jody Lewis and Logan Newsome. So I, I hope to address all of these, these questions throughout the presentation. I, I think it makes a little more sense for me to walk through my presentation. Um, it'll touch on a lot of these points. Uh, and then if there's anything specific at the end that I missed, I'll, I'll go ahead and address that. Um, and I do apologize Collier Marsh from my office who's not able to attend tonight. Uh, I'm not quite as tall as him, but I, I hope I'm as proficient in my presentation. So again, uh, this request uh, really is to position this site for future development as this area uh, begins to grow with the extension of five forty. Um, our aim with this tier one conditional zoning was to provide that framework for a high-quality mixed-use development um, that, with standards that go above and beyond what the UDO requires. So again, it's two parcels uh, just south of that ten-ten road intersection with Benson Road. It's about forty-seven acres in area. Uh, we do have a concurrent annexation submitted with this to bring it within the town's corporate limits. You can also see uh, just south of this site, uh, the outline of that five forty extension. As we all know, that is nearing completion. Um, and uh, once this is complete, uh, I think it's, uh, it's fairly obvious that this part of town will grow substantially. Um, we've seen that in Western Wake County as that portion of five forty was completed. So the other piece of growth uh, that, that is needed for uh, development and, and growth in this area is access to utilities, sewer and water, public utilities. So you're gonna have five forty coming in through with access to the greater triangle, but you also need access to public utilities. What this project proposes, uh, along with all its, its other conditions, is to extend utilities um, a substantial distance down Benson Road to this area to allow this area to grow. So knowing that growth is coming to this area, uh, this rezoning aims to put the standards in place to allow that quality development that is consistent with the town's plans and provides the development that the town wants in this area. So looking at the guidance in the Garden Forward Comprehensive Plan, uh, this is within a mixed-use center which does envision those more dense residential uses, the mix of residential uses as well as integration with commercial uses. Uh, it is also an activity center. These areas are purposely designated for additional growth and the higher, the highest densities in the town, throughout the town. You wanna concentrate them in specific areas so you create walkable mixed-use areas. This site is also designated as an area to transform. Again, uh, this just makes sense with five forty coming through. We want this area to grow with that easy access to five forty. And we wanted, we wanted to transform it into something uh, that is mixed-use and walkable in nature as envisioned by the comprehensive plan. So looking at the request itself, uh, it is for the commercial mixed-use zoning district. Um, again, this is a tier one conditional zoning request. This is the first, uh, I believe the first request you have seen, uh, which again, does not require that more detailed master plan. And I wanna pause here briefly to explain why we submitted the tier one conditional zoning. So as previously men- mentioned, this area of town is poised for additional growth. However, anticipating growth in an area is an inherently risky proposition, which is especially true for the first project to spur that growth. We firmly believe this is a sound investment for this area, but the applicants are willing to take on the significant amount of risks, which is compounded by the need and the cost of extending utilities to this area. So with that in mind, we do, we do need a little more flexibility in site design in order to respond to the timing and level of that growth in this area. Obtaining financing for the project will largely be limited by how much the project is able to adapt to the needs of the area. So by proposing the tier one conditional zoning, we are trying to thread the needle by providing enough detail and certainty that this is going to be a quality mixed-use development, but also providing enough flexibility to respond to market demands. So we are attempting to do this by proposing a substantial list of development standards to provide that certainty. Another major factor to consider here is that any development in the future is almost certain to trigger the requirement for a special use permit. As you saw in the previous hearing, that is a very detailed plan. So you will have another opportunity to review any specific development plan. With this case, this rezoning case, we're just trying to put the framework in position to allow the development to go to that next phase of putting in the investment to design the project. So turning to the land use plan, uh, you can see we have provided as much detail as possible at this point in the process. Uh, the green areas are the wetlands and the orange areas are the developable areas. You've got area one in the northeast, area two in the southwest and area three in the southeast. Our zoning conditions limit area two, which is in the southwest, to only residential uses, while the two areas along Benson Road are designated for that mixed-use development. This plan also provides approximate locations of transportation improvements. Uh, there will be two, uh, there are two required access points on both Jordan Road and Benson Road. Uh, the plan does show one of those on each road. Uh, on Benson Road, it is a cross from Southern Trace Trail and on Jordan is a cross from Guffy, Guffy Drive. We are also committing to providing that east-west connectivity through the site, uh, which will require crossing those wetlands. Um, and staying in the world of transportation, uh, we did have a traffic impact analysis performed for this project. The first iteration of that, uh, of that TIA um, was performed prior to updating um, some of those uh, land use assumptions. Looking at the original TIA though, um, that TIA did not recommend any specific off-site improvements other than the frontage improvements and the turn lanes. However, we have come to understand that the neighbors, from the neighbors in our discussions with the neighbors, that the existing conditions, especially at the intersection uh, with Southern Trace Trail, is uh, rather challenging right now under existing conditions. Um, so prior to uh, going through the, the process of updating that TIA, we did add a zoning condition that will require, uh, even though it's not recommended by the, the original TIA or the new type TIA, to be frank, it will, the condition will require a signal warrant analysis to be performed at the time a site plan is submitted that meets the twenty-five thousand square foot requirement for commercial uses. So any site plan that uh, proposes twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial uses, at that time will be required to perform signal warrant analysis. I will point out the original TIA, those traffic counts did not, uh, they do not anticipate that even with the full build-out um, of the assumptions under that original TIA, so the four ninety and twenty thousand square feet, it, that study did not expect to meet the signal warrants. This new TIA with new assumptions of six hundred fifty residential units and twenty-five thousand square feet of non-residential uses at full build-out, that is anticipated to meet the warrants to require the signal, which again, with that will need to be approved by NC DOT, but we are hopeful that it is approved because in this instance, the neighbors' interests and ours align on this. We all want a traffic signal here. It'll make it more efficient for the neighbors. It'll make it more efficient for um, for other people to come into our site and to visit those commercial tenants.
Help me, help me with my math. Two hundred and eighty-five plus two ten plus thirty-two, where does that come to?
Equal five twenty-seven.
That's not six, where does six hundred and fifty come from?
So this is that, on this, this slide, this is just a potential development program. We have not, uh, we have not designed a full project yet. These, this is just potential numbers that?
The, the other potential number you're, that's being thrown out is six hundred and fifty. So why wouldn't you design the program on this, the merit of?
Yes, and, and I think that's part of why we proposed the tier one uh, site plan or tier one conditional zoning is that we need that flexibility. We aren't able to move forward with specific designs until we know we have the zoning in place to get the financing and then also to get the financing to extend the utilities. So this is just the first piece.
You're presenting a program that's inconsistent with the max that you want, which also throws off the density calculations.
Yes, and that, so this potential development program, a- again, is just potential. The maximum that we proposed by the zoning, again, that, that's a maximum no matter what if this rezoning gets approved. We built in some flexibility to allow us to add in more density as this uh, development is designed in the future, um, to be able to get up to that six fifty, but we cannot get to that six fifty or go over it. So we built in the flexibility as we move into the design phase. So let's say we wanna go from three to four stories, we have the ability to do that.
Height doesn't change density, it changed form. Same number of people, same number, same number of units on the same amount of acreage. Depending, it doesn't matter how you organize it, it's the same density.
Again, this is, this is just to provide the flexibility as we design the project. So we, we could have the four hundred ninety or whatever this potential development program envisions. Or, you know, the markets could change in a year or two and we have the ability to get up to closer to six fifty and place that density in the activity center that the town recommends in this location based on the comprehensive plan. So again, this is just all based on flexibility and the need to adapt to market conditions when this project is designed. So going back quickly to the TIA, um, so the, the updated TIA, it did uh, anticipate that at full, at this new full build-out, that a, a traffic signal um, would be warranted and would be approved by NC DOT. Again, this is gonna come down to NC DOT and whether or not they approve it. Uh, but we have added that condition that we will be required to do that signal warrant analysis at the time we submit a site plan.
So you have written in that you do the signal warrant analysis. Do you also have the condition if it require, if it, if it needs the analysis and it should have a signal that you're gonna stop the signal?
Yes, let me find the wording of that condition. So I actually don't see that in the condition, but that is something we will look at. That might have just been an oversight, but again, that's, that's something we'll look at. Um, because I, again, our, our interests align with the neighbors here. We, we would prefer a signal here, um, because it'll, it'll help the commercial tenants there get more access and more visibility.
I would look at that very seriously. If you've been out there seven-thirty in the morning on Highway fifty trying to get out, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so that is, yeah, and, and again, this is just the initial public hearing, so we, we appreciate that feedback. The signal warrant shall be performed if this comes from the start. It doesn't say install. So we, we can revise that language. The intent was that we would perform the warrant analysis and if that warrant analysis triggers the requirement, then we would install it. And we can clarify that language certainly.
Okay.
Um, and I, I'll pause there real quick. Um, I, I know Collier and the applicants met with you uh, prior to this. As, as you mentioned, the, the two on ones, um, I'm not sure what they're called, but we did appreciate that opportunity and we think it was productive conversation and discussion. Um, and I hope that's, that's seen through these updated conditions um, that I am about to go through. Um, and I hope you'll bear with me, uh, there are a lot of conditions, um, but I, I think it's important to walk through these because I think it really shows a willingness to work, uh, work with council members and provide the conditions to make this project that we're all proud of. So as I previously mentioned, uh, the residential uses are only permitted, uh, I'll rephrase, only residential uses are permitted in that uh, area two, which is the southwest corner of, of the property adjacent to the uh, single-family residential uses to the southwest. Um, this was a neighbor request that we were happy to comply with. Another neighbor request was that signal warrant analysis, which we did add since the neighborhood meeting. Um, another request to the neighbors was a wider landscape buffer along that southwest portion. Um, we did add that, it is now a forty-five foot landscape buffer with a five-foot term. Um, we also wanted to make sure that we are going above and beyond with all of our conditions. So with open space and buffers, we've committed to an open area, uh, committed, committed to preserving an open area forty percent of the site in its entirety. Uh, and then twenty percent of that will be tree preservation. Uh, we've also modeled some open space and programmed open space uh, conditions off of the comprehensive plan and what those, uh, those recommendations are. Uh, so within the residential area, we've committed to a minimum eight thousand square foot programmed area, a sixty-feet-wide playfield, uh, as well as a playground, uh, unless that area is developed for a fifty-five-plus uh, community. In the uh, non-residential areas, with mixed-use areas, we've also committed to a minimum seven thousand square foot area uh, that will be programmed with seating, public art. Uh, and these are specifically listed in the conditions, public art and a flower bed. Uh, in addition to that, we've committed to site design standards. Um, so for the uh, non-residential buildings fronting Benson Road, we've limited parking between the buildings and street to two roads of parking and one access wide. That is to pull the buildings closer to the street to create that more mixed-use walkable area. For the residential buildings fronting Benson Road, those would have to front Benson Road. Um, in addition, we've, we've committed to a ten-foot multi-use path along Benson Road, again, to create that walkability and that mixed-use feeling. Um, and as, we've also committed to an internal sidewalk and pathways to connect to all areas of Benson Road, that, that multi-use path. Um, th- this next section, the environmental, environmental commitments, uh, we've really looked hard at this and what we could do that was maybe different from other projects, um, but something that will really benefit the area. So we've committed to a minimum seventy-five percent of landscaping, uh, that must be native species. Uh, we're gonna do some educational, uh, educational signage uh, in, uh, identifying those environmentally sensitive areas. We're gonna provide that double-silt fencing during construction, uh, as well as, uh, we've committed to green building standards for all primary buildings. That is, that is a substantial commitment, um, and that is, you know, that LEED certification, that gold standard, uh, that will be for all primary buildings. Uh, in addition, uh, we are committing to two types of green stormwater infrastructure. Uh, that is the, those bio-retention areas, pervious pavers, uh, devices that are more, uh, less invasive to the, the environmental areas and um, process that stormwater in a more naturally, environmentally friendly way. Uh, turning to the multifamily commitments, again, it's a maximum of six hundred fifty. That's spread across the entire project. Um, that can be on that area two, uh, or along the mixed-use areas along Benson Road, uh, either in separate buildings or vertically integrated with commercial uses. Um, these buildings will be interior corridors, the multifamily buildings, and they will be elevator-served even if they are two stories or three stories. That is a firm commitment, um, that I understand came this, with, came from discussions with council members. So these, these are really going to be designed to be top-of-the-line, high-quality and bring value to the area. Um, and I, I can tell you from looking for apartments in the past few years, those interior corridors and elevator-serving products are relatively difficult to find across a triangle. Um, so again, the, uh, the areas two, uh, one and three along Benson Road, they have a minimum of three stories and a maximum of five stories. So that means they have to be three stories. That's intended to create, um, that mixed-use environment in that activity center to really activate the area. Uh, the area two just has a maximum of five stories, no minimum. Uh, and also we've, uh, included extensive architectural guidelines for those, uh, multifamily buildings. This includes, uh, material standards, vinyl siding is prohibited. Um, the side, siding color shall, uh, vary. Um, we've committed to a minimum of twenty percent masonry, um, as well as foundations, the slab on grade with masonry covering any exposed slab. The facade plans of, will have offsets, uh, to not allow continuous runs over twenty-five feet with a minimum depth of one foot. And the project, projecting each race shall have a minimum twelve-inch depth on all sides. Again, I, it sounds like there's some continued discussions on, uh, the style of multifamily buildings and, uh, you know, we, we always thought that first public hearing, so we, we would be wanting to meet with you again to, to make sure that we are consistent with, with what council envisions. As for the non-residential commitments, this is a, a requirement for a minimum of twenty-five thousand square feet. Um, I do wanna pause here because this is different than what you normally see. You normally see a maximum, which doesn't require you to build any? You normally see a maximum, which doesn't require you to build any. Here, we're committing to a minimum of 25,000 square feet. That means this is ensuring that this will be a mixed-use development with that integration of commercial and residential. That means we're creating a walkable area for residents to live and shop and, and play all in the same area. Again, the, those non-residential buildings, they must front Benson Road with a limited amount of parking, and we've also included architectural conditions for these buildings, such as varied roof forms, facade articulation, grates and roofs, and walls with texture materials to be incorporated to add visual interest. We've committed to reducing large expanses of light walls. They can't be greater than 25 in length or height, and they have to be broken up with windows or other architectural features to, to reduce visual impacts. The roof features may include flat roofs with parapet, hip roofs, canopies or awnings with metals material. Windows and storefront blazings shall be divided to be either square or vertical in proportions that each section is taller than it is wide. This is a lot of technical information, but this, this really shows that we went through the trouble to, to commit to these, these architectural conditions, because we want this to be a very high-quality development. Again, we are exceeding the transparency requirements along Benson Road. We've committed to 55% minimum of the primary building materials to be brick, stone, decorative, scored concrete basement units for fiber snap panels. Vinyl siding is prohibited. Again, we're exceeding the facade standards for articulation requirements, and all non-residential buildings and suite entrances shall be covered by awnings, colonnades or canopies with a minimum of 20 square feet area, or entrances shall be covered under walkways adjacent to the primary facade. This last commitment is, is pretty detailed, but I think it's substantial, because again, it will create an area where people want to congregate and gather. So the non-residential buildings and building clusters are required to provide outdoor gathering and dining spaces or patios. These outdoor spaces shall be a minimum size of 10% of the building's first or footprint of the building they serve and shall be adjacent to or within 100 feet. The patios have to be constructed of masonry pavers, decorative colored or stamped concrete, artificial turf and/or rubber surfacing. And additionally, these outdoor gathering dining spaces shall include atmospheric architectural lighting, partial covering to provide shade and a minimum of 20 lineal feet of permanent seating for each 1,000 square feet of patio or gathering dining space area. So again, I just want to reiterate that we've gone through a lot of effort to provide very specific detailed written conditions in lieu of the master plan. Again, that's needed for flexibility in actual site design, but we hope this framework of development standards provides the certainty for you guys to know that this will be a high-quality development that meets the intent of the activity center and the mixed-use center that it's located in. So again, this was a lot of information, and this, the rezoning case will play an important role in facilitating, facilitating growth in this part of town, again, extending those utilities, which is critical in growth in the area as 540 is completed. And we hope to further refine the project as we move forward and hear your comments and concerns as we move forward to planning commission, which is what we are requesting tonight, and our entire team is here to answer any questions you have.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Frederick. A lot of great information. I'll call on council members if you have any questions for Mr. Frederick. We'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Again, we've got quite a project here, and I think we've discussed it in detail. Again, emphasize that stoplight is going to be very important out there. I think it's one of the hottest items with the people living out there. They can probably enjoy amenities of across the road, as long as they can get across over there to it, so, so, and that'll be good business for the, for those folks. So it's going to be interesting, wait, when we see the, the big plan come in, as you say, and, and what we've got to offer there. So, other than that, that's all I've got right now.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton.
Two things, I think there should be another neighborhood meeting before the planning commission, since the numbers have changed, and I see you have elevator service, so that's a plus. Your open space is too puny. 8,000 and 7,000, 8,000 square feet is less than a quarter of an acre. Behind our rec center in downtown Garner is over an acre back there. 8,000 square feet is puny. 7,000 square feet is puny. 650 apartments, if there's one apartment, if there's one kid in the third of those apartments, that's 216 kids. We couldn't stand 216 kids on 7,000 square feet. They couldn't play ball, or they're going to kick a balloon around. So your open space needs to be greater. Open space that they can play on, not open space that we count all these buffers and stuff. That's, that's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about green space that kids can play. What was the quote I sent y'all the other day? I read another town did something, let me find that. Well-stated, another town where they, oh, it was a real good article in the paper about, another project of several hundred apartments, and two council members sat there, sat there and said, "More green space, more green space, more green space." It was a project between Derma Chapel Hill. I thought, oh my gosh, more green space, more flat usable green space. That's all for now.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer.
No questions.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yeah, appreciate all the time that was spent with council members and the mayor and staff leading up to this. I think a little surprising to have that many more units come. Equally surprising is, in reading our comprehensive plan, new, old, indifferent, talking with council members, that you've come to us with no allotment for any type of workforce or affordable housing. I'm shocked, because I know we brought it up in those meetings, and I think to Mr. Singleton's point on refining process, I think we've done a good job of refining things before they get to planning commission, and to, to some comments tonight around our, our efforts around workforce and affordable housing. Planning commission can't do that work, but it'd be good if we could come from council to planning commission with a proposal that they can start to work with and analyze. And you've got numbers to work with, too, and analyze to see how they work, but I don't want us to get to the final decision meeting without having thought been invested in that, particularly when you had all this time to think about it after we had all these conversations, and you don't have anything. So with Mr. Singleton and some of these other things we want to polish out, I think, whatever goes to planning commission, part of that needs to be a, a proposal that may adapt over time, at planning commission, and then when it comes back to us, but I don't think it's, I think it can't go to planning commission without some type of proposal to start with, and I would, my preference would be for staff to craft with council a proposal than for you to draft one and send to us, so that we can start getting in that practice mode of doing that work and not sort of be anchored to some other expectation. That's what I'll come back.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance?
This is our first tier one, correct? This is our first tier one zoning. Without tier one, basically, we've seen tier twos with site plans where everything is laid out. This one is just looking at conditions and understandings going forward as to what, what is being proposed. So this is a unique situation for, for myself. I'm assuming for the council as well, because we don't have the, don't have the site plan. However, with the conditions and the thought process that's gone in so far, and with the consideration that has been made, is it safe to assume that the consideration for workforce housing can be considered during this tier one process, since there's not?
Yeah, if I may. I haven't been as involved with this project, but I do know that affordable housing has been considered. What's challenging with this case, and we appreciate the importance of providing affordable housing as a, as a town goal, among many, many other goals that the town has, you know, a single project just simply cannot bear the cost of meeting every single goal. In this case, the, the extension of the utilities makes it challenging to provide some form of commitment. I'm not saying it's, it's not something we can get to in the future, but we'll have to consider that again, but I just want to make it clear that we have considered it, and there are other challenges that we face with this project that may, make this project not the, the right case to provide affordable housing with, so.
Hey, thank you. And at this point, let's see if we have some individuals signed up to speak.
No, we have a consultant still hasn't.
Excuse me?
The consultant here, yes, let me see.
Mayor Dupton in council, may I speak?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me well with the microphone. I am Jim Scosma. I am with CRS1, the developer of the project, and I just, I did want to make a couple of comments to try to clarify some things that have been highlighted. We have had more than one neighborhood meeting. We've actually had three. We're willing to have another if that can help everyone get to a comfortable understanding. I want to address the 650 dwelling unit maximum. If I could ask planning staff to pull up that graphic again? Yeah, that's it. If you look on there, you see the potential development program, which I think was referred to before, but just below that, to the left, it says residential density maximum, 13.84 dwelling units per acre. If you multiply that by the gross acreage, yeah, I think you get 659. Every single submittal we've done, that maximum residential density metric has been visible on the submittal, and it always equated it to 650. So I just wanted to be clear, we haven't done a bait and switch. This graphic was always shown in the neighborhood meetings. We also shared with the neighborhood groups the actual text written submittal, which references 650, and did from the very start. Now, I'll admit, our traffic, our initial traffic study, that goes back a ways, missed the mark, because it featured 490 instead of the 650. Staff appropriately pointed that out, and we quickly made that change. In association with that, I want to point out that, that initial study at the lower density said traffic signal warrants would not be met, even at full buildout. That was a disappointment to the neighborhood groups and to ourselves. We, as the developer of the site, want a traffic signal on Benson Road at the main entrance. So the revised, just received, traffic study now says, at the 650 and the higher 25,000 square feet of commercial, it does project to meet the traffic signal warrants. So in a convoluted way, yeah, it's greater density, which we thought this commercial mixed-use and the comp plan and everything the town wanted called for, the higher density. Now the higher density analyzed does say we should get a traffic signal. So make no mistake, we, we want that to happen. And I'll point out again, we have heard very much in our conversations with the council members about some of the things that are desired, higher quality development, higher quality residential and commercial. We've really worked hard to try to address those in the conditions, including the inclusion and commitment, no matter the height of the building, on the residential buildings, to elevators and interior corridors. And I think the final thing I want to point out is, I've followed closely the town process and previous submittals, and I do believe there have been several previous tier one zoning requests, and maybe Jeff can, can clarify that. So any other questions?
That has, man. That has.
Yeah. Yeah, we are still learning, though, and thank you for stepping us through the process. Yours was one of the first ones we used as a case study.
Okay, any other questions for me?
So just to ensure, you said there have been three neighborhood meetings, but we only have the information from the one from August 28th. So that's just why, I mean, that's not the information provided, there's, there's no information provided for the other two neighborhood meetings.
Yeah, I don't know why in the pack that there's not the information about other neighborhood meetings.
Okay.
And maybe if the neighborhood group is represented here, which I think they are, I think they could confirm that there have been more than one meeting.
Let's don't go too, let's don't go too far afield here. Let's get through this piece at a time in an orderly way, because we still have to hear from some of the residents, the public out there. So thank you for your input. Again, let's keep in mind our, our object here tonight is not to approve or disapprove this project, but to pass it along to the planning commission for further study or reject it outright. So certainly, our process generally includes going to the planning commission for more public input, more judgment, before it comes back to the council at a later date, over a month from now, for some final decision. So it's kind of a work in progress. Thank you. And with that, I'll call on our attorney to see if anyone has signed up to speak.
Yes, we have a, a number of people have signed up. The first one is Tammy Girmiller.
Hey, thank you. If you'd just approach the microphone, tell us your name and address, and if you would, keep in mind that despite we've had some people with relatively lengthy presentations, we would like to request the public to go for the three-minute time limit. Try not to be repetitive. It's all yours.
Talk fast.
Okay.
My name's Tammy Girmiller. I live at 5333 Woodbeck Drive.
Okay, now, and we're also experimenting with our microphones, so if you don't mind, don't get quite as close as Mr. Shushman did, but it's.
Okay, can you hear me? Is that better?
Smarter, a little closer.
Okay, I'll repeat it. Tammy Girmiller, I live at 5333 Woodbeck Drive in the Grissom Farms subdivision, and first off, I was never invited to any neighborhood meeting, and my other neighbors said the exact thing. The first time I saw about this project was the rezoning sign on the property, I had no idea. Let me tell you a little bit about my background. I'm a transportation engineer, and I have been one for 34 years. My background includes traffic safety, congestion management, structure design, and I review TMA's. I also work for the town Garner Senior Center. I teach senior yoga on Wednesday evenings, and I've done so for about 10 years now. So we bought our house in Garner in 2004, because it was a lovely area, it was quiet and a great place, we thought, to raise our young family. But things have changed, and for me, I feel Garner isn't as nice as it once was. Rampant growth has ruined the charm, and I feel that not all growth is good, especially growth at this, these numbers. I'm requesting, I'm respectfully requesting the board to refuse this request for rezoning for high-density at this location for the following reasons. Without major improvements to NC 50, it cannot take any more high-density projects. It dumps a lot of traffic. Garner does have a lot of available apartments, and this doesn't sound like it's going to be affordable housing anyway. It sounds like it's going to be very expensive. So I want to talk about congestion a little bit. Congestion erodes the quality of life for all residents, and I can speak to that, because at certain hours of the day, I can't leave my house. I have to go to work before 6 o'clock, or I can't get out, I can't seem to get out, and between about 3:30 to 6, I can't get out again. So if we want to go to Wide Oak and get dinner, we can't, can't get out, can't get back. Sometimes it has taken me 45 minutes to go from my job at the senior center in Garner to my home in Garner. I've actually contemplated getting an electric scooter and keep it in my trunk, so I can get home easier, because it's just unbelievably frustrating to get home. You sit at lights over and over and over again. Congestion also grades the safety of road. More crashes, frustrated drivers, and risk-taking, road rage incidents go up as well. Congestion has a negative economic impact. Like I said, I will not go out between certain hours and pick up dinner. It's just easier to throw fish sticks in the oven. Sorry, I forgot my glasses, so I have to get a little close. Inviting impacts with more pollution and noise. I used to hear cows and chickens when I could sit on the front porch, and that was really nice. That has been replaced by cars, trucks, construction equipment, and I can no longer sit out. It's not enjoyable. I can't use my deck, I can't use my front porch. And speaking of the I-540 project, I won't get into detail of that, but that's been an environmental disaster of ripping down the trees, the animals that are displaced. I have hordes of deer in my front yard, because they have no place to go. So I'd like to talk about numbers. The ZJers love to quantify things. When a road reaches capacity, gridlock. When a road reaches capacity, gridlock occurs. It is the point where the number of vehicles on the road is greater than the road is able to move them. I believe we are there for NC fifty already. A rural two-lane highway is at capacity when the AADT reaches approximately eighteen thousand a day. According to the NCDOT AADT maps for two thousand and twenty-three, not twenty-one, there are sixteen thousand five hundred. So you take in the growth from twenty-three to twenty-four, it's growing at a rate of five percent is kind of for a high-growth area. That's going to put you at over that eighteen thousand. Add in the VA Center when that gets built with its eight-car garage. That's anticipated, three hundred townhouses going in across the street, and all kinds of residential buildings going in Johnston County with people tripping up fifty. We're going to be over capacity already before this project even comes in. So roughly, per the capacity manual, each apartment unit will generate seven trips per day. So these are the numbers that I had from previous. Five hundred apartments multiplied by seven trips adds thirty-five hundred trips per day, bringing us well into like twenty-two thousand. NC fifty's not going to move, so six hundred and fifty's going to be even more than that. Be well over capacity. I feel this would be irresponsible since this will erode safety and quality of life for residents and roadway users such as myself and my neighbors. I'd like to talk about safety. So the Highway Safety Improvement Program is a federal program that identifies, we have a group that looks at this, and every year they run reports, and they come up with potentially hazardous intersections and strips. For two thousand and twenty-three, the intersection of SR ten-ten at Jordan Road is identified as a potentially hazardous intersection. This project will be impacting that intersection. Also, NC fifty at In-N-Out Trail is identified also as a potentially hazardous intersection. I was surprised to see that ten-ten at the gas station was not identified because more often than not, there are many crashes that occur there. And that would be the nearest signal to the one that's proposed by this project. And I don't know how close they are to each other, but that's, that I can see as being a potentially hazardous intersection as well.
Okay, we are running a little, running a little bit long in respect, in respect for other people's time as well.
Last point, adding lanes, I-40, which was probably thought to help fifty, didn't help very much. It's still growing, looking at the AADT, it's going up by percentage every year. So I don't believe I-540 is going to help as much as people would think it will, especially since we would have to pay to use it, we're on the northern side, it's free. Thank you.
Thank you, and keep, keep in mind, we, we're eager to hear from all of the residents. Email us, call us, come to the planning commission meeting if it gets to that. We need the input, thank you very much. Next on your list.
Edward Purtle?
Purdy.
Purdy, sorry.
My name is Edward Purdy, I live at ninety-two Ford Jordan Road, which is adjacent to this development, to the west. I came with one item that I wanted to bring up, and after hearing a lot of what's going on here tonight, I'm going to hit a whole bunch of topics, and then if y'all, if there's more, if I can elaborate, I will. My initial concern, all the wetlands in this is Guppy Swamp. Wetlands is not a name for it, it is a name by ecological area. It runs all the way down to Jolich Road, and then right down to Salisbury Road through Guppy Branch. But it is a swamp with an ecosystem. If we go putting this much development around that swamp, it is not going to survive. And I think the environment must be taken into account. Under six beekeepers, myself being one of them, our bees live and get all their nourishment out of that swamp based on the natural vegetation that grows there. And if we put this much impervious soil, that ecosystem will break down. Secondly, any kind of disaster from the pump station is going to go downstream through that branch. After the I-540 and all the environmental lawsuits over the Dorkwedge muscle, we know that the environment should be taken into account on these type things. I've not heard an environmental impact study. I would be very interested to hear what environmental impact study says this is going to do to Guppy Swamp. There was a public meeting with the fire department that your predecessor, Mr. Gupta, attended that was about a takeover of the fire department by the town. And I was assured by the mayor then that they had no interest whatsoever in any annexation south of the current limits of town at that time, because I questioned that while, while the meetings for the fire department was going on. Now, we have this development, and there's two more to the south coming. This seems to be a step-off point for two other developments, to get this water sewer out and defer the cost with multiple developments. In my opinion, as a note. This property's not in ETJ, I'm not even sure why the Town of Garner's considering this. The ETJ does not go to this property, it's stopped short. There is currently a process, I've got another letter from Town of Garner, they're wanting to extend the ETJ, but it has not been extended. So I'm not sure why that part is even here. The numbers keep changing, the six fifty, I have been notified of two meetings, I will, I don't know about the third, he mentioned the third. I have known two meetings, but every time the meetings come out, these numbers change. Then we get here tonight, and now we're at six fifty from five twenty-five was the last one that I knew. This seems like a tier-one is a blank check for development. I am not opposed to development, I spent twenty-five years as president of Turner Farms. I resigned this spring because of my opposition to this development and my fiduciary duty to the other shareholders. So I am not anti-development, I'm anti-bad development. And this is bad development on a piece of land that shouldn't be developed. It is too sensitive. You add in all the other concerns of traffic and the highway, the bridge, Swift Creek, limits people. Okay, fifty cannot stand any more traffic because of that bridge, that bridge was never widened. I've heard that fifty was going to be widened all the way to Benson, all my life, I'm fifty-three years old. I hadn't seen a whole lot of progress. School system did it right there at New Bethel Church when they built South Garner. They were forced to add those extra lanes. All that is now is when you come up to the stoplight, people come around you to get in front of you. It's a racetrack from that stoplight, and it changes because of those shut-off lanes that were required. I mean, we need the development the rest of the way into town and going out before stuff like this is considered. I don't know, I just, I don't understand, this seems to be kind of willy-nilly to me based on the information we've been given as residents, it changes every time, we come here and it's changed again. I'm just not sure this has been thought through all the way. I really think environmental, environmental impact study would tell us all some good. You know, we're supposed, we're, we're constantly told we've got to consider the environment and the way we do things, and I just don't think we are with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, a lot of good information, sir, thank you. And Ms. Jones, we, we have another speaker signed up.
Tom Rains.
Hi folks, just good to see some of you again after absence of a few years. I moved to Garner in nineteen seventy-five and left for a little while because I got a good deal on the house in Clayton, and then came back here in ninety-eight, and I had no idea that what I was moving into a torrent of automobiles. There was a comment made earlier about fourteen thousand trips on Highway fifty. Well, I ran into thirteen thousand of those trips coming here tonight. Traffic, traffic was backed up from the BP station, past McDonald's, all the way to Brookbend Church. Backed up, that was one long, one long line of cars. By the way, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that comment about apartment buildings and elevators. I think it should be a general across-the-board requirement for Garner that any building that's more than one-story have an elevator. I delivered fruit baskets for edible arrangements for a few years to help them out. By the end of the day, when I faced a three-story apartment building, I had to call the person that lived on the third floor and say, please come down and get this, because I can't walk up there. So anyway, from what I understood, I was delighted to know that there was going to be a traffic light there at Southern Trace Trail because that will help us get out of the subdivision. But did I understand or misunderstand that the buildings that are the business buildings are going to be four or five stories along Highway fifty corridor? Did I understand that or misunderstand that? Okay, three- to five-story buildings are going along Highway fifty, right across from Southern Trace, right across or down the street from Turner Farms. You guys are wrecking, absolutely wrecking the quality of life in Southern Trace. We're a rural subdivision, beautiful subdivision, the lots are wide, you don't have to reach out your window to your neighbor next door to get a cup of sugar. The lots are plenty large, trees, wooded lots, it's a desirable subdivision. But you put this monstrosity next door. I looked up to see what commercial mixed-use conditional was. I looked it up in the dictionary, and when I looked that up, picture of New York City came up. That's what, that's what these guys are proposing, is to ruin our subdivision. And I'm, at first, as I said, I was excited to have a traffic light there, but now I don't want any, any dealings with this at all because this is not a subdivision with apartments. I would welcome that, I would welcome affordable housing apartments, but not anything that's going to put businesses, the people that live on the east side of Highway fifty are going to have to deal with these businesses all night long. Suppose somebody wants to come in and put in a nightclub. Is there going to be any restriction against somebody putting a nightclub in there? They have to listen to the music, the lights all night long. So, so what I said, my fellow council members, they are wrecking Southern Trace and Turner Farms. And I think that's all that I have to say off the top of my head. But anyway, thank you for your time for this.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us, sir, thank you. Ms. Jones?
John Cavalaro.
Good evening, good evening, thank you. When I first got here, I wasn't sure what I was going to say, but after listening to all of this, I think I have a few words, and I keep it short as much as I can. I've lived in Garner since nineteen ninety-five with my family. Graduated two girls from Garner High School, love the area. And since then, I've seen traffic grow immensely on Route fifty Benson Road, Turner Farm Road, where I live. Fourteen forty Turner Farms. Needless to say, I'm not against development, but I like to look at things from twenty thousand feet. I'm a retired electrical engineer, my wife's a retired registered nurse. We use Benson Road a lot, and I can honestly say that I've probably seen the traffic increase from Turner Farms to the McDonald's on Timber, probably gone up about forty to fifty percent in those years. And when we first commuting, twenty minutes maybe to get to that crossing, now easily thirty to forty minutes. Since I'm retired, I don't have to go at that time. But like the other woman said, if you want to go out to dinner or something like that, you got to take that into consideration. So my point is, is anybody looking at expanding Benson Road? That's what should be done first. Any developer that comes in here and puts in a couple million, a hundred million dollars, should take twenty million of that and put it into the road. Putting a light is not solving the problem at all. I mean, I can't believe even suggested putting a light there. Just, of course you need a light, but that's not going to solve the problem. You got six hundred and fifty units, let's say you have four hundred and ninety units up there. So that's about three hundred cars that you're going to add to that road in the morning. So the road has got to come first, the infrastructure's got to come first before you can do anything with it. We've already got a big problem. I-540 is not going to solve the problem right away because nobody wants to pay tolls. So you're not going to get much use out of that, you're not going to. There's so many developments south of forty-two, there's the developments that occurred on Cleveland Road. So in the morning, you get a lot of traffic coming in. So my point is, you're going to put something developing in, and I, I agree, I don't like the idea at all of having that kind of intensity, but you got to look at the roads first. You got to take care of the roads, because if you don't take care of the roads, nothing's going to get solved, it's just going to get worse. And like one lady said, it's just going to be a bottleneck. I grew up in New York City, and I can tell you, I don't want that happening again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for your good comments. How many more speakers do we have?
Potentially four.
Okay, we'll, we'll try to make it snappy, appreciate your brevity and conciseness, and trying to tell us something that hasn't already been said. And the next one would be?
Amy Hartzell.
I'm mayor and council. First, I want to say it's been a learning experience for me, it's been my first meeting, Amy Hartzell, five-two-hundred Woodrent Drive in Grissom Farm. Unfortunately, I think Grissom Farm missed the announcements of all this coming up, but I know we're a little bit down the road, we're past the pond. But we appreciate knowing about this and coming. I'm a stay-at-home mom, I moved to the neighborhood twelve years ago. I get to leave the house at different times of day. And if you're aware of the area, which I'm sure you are, it's where ten-ten comes on Cleveland School Road, there's a light. You'll cross over where I-540 is, and then you'll go down, and there's a light down at BP. For our neighborhood, we have about fifty homes, we come up to the intersection, and half of us need to go to Ford Rowley and turn left. We don't even have a turn lane, we have a gap in the road where sometimes you can sit and then go real quick. Before we had the gap in the road, I have half my relatives work at DOT, and I'm like, is there a way that you can give me just a little burp at one of those lights? It gives me just enough to scoot out and turn left? And he said, ma'am, you want to burp? And I was like, just a little something to turn. I said, because it's consistent traffic, I don't have, when the light turns, there's more cars there. He said, well, that's our goal. Our goal is to have traffic moving consistently with no burp. So bless you for creating that little gap, it's not a turn lane, but I use it like one to turn left. But it is hard, and to be able to go to school, a good group of our children in our neighborhood actually go to school over on four oh one. If you talk about the growth of Garner which we're seeing, we appreciate that you are thinking of all people, the older people, the people who also are having trouble with money, as well as apartments. It sounds like we have a lot of apartments between Garner, which is already existing now, and in the works of growing, and at four oh one. So to be able to put one, it, it doesn't really make the best place on that small little, I guess it's two miles, between the two stoplights of six hundred apartments. I know you probably have at least two drivers, if not the kids driving, and coming in there. And to their point, even if you have to go down fifty, you can't move on fifty. My husband works downtown, it's a good hour to get from Timber to our house if it's that rush hour time. But I do appreciate how much thought y'all put into it. It sounds like you're trying to make it pretty, and you're trying to make it nice. And so I would like to propose, rather than us cramming in as many things as we can and making an apartment, why don't we go back and think about the young professionals or these new families that maybe have a fifteen-hundred-square-foot home with a quarter acre stamp of grass with some trees, a park area where they can play? Because that's going to help the new people who come in. And when you have ownership in the town, and also you'll see when you have children in the town, you also are bringing in more money, more activities. And I think that will do more for this community, it'll help them make money, but have less cars right there in that gap. If we could widen the road, that's a plus. I have two children that are going to be driving in the next three years, for them to get out of the neighborhood scares me. If I tell them they have to turn right, you can't even get down on I-540 and do a clover leaf up. You would have to go right down to the next neighborhood where the ten-ten light is. Do a U-turn in their neighborhood to make a left-hand turn. I don't know what it's going to look like in the future, but I can tell you, six hundred apartments is not going to help. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for staying in the time with us. Next speaker?
So they may be with the developer, it's Charlie Townsend, Jody Lewis, and Logan Newsome? Okay. So that, that would conclude the speakers.
Okay, so that's all the speakers. So y'all have noticed the traffic on fifty, huh? Yeah, I think that's safe to say. And we, we certainly have looked at it, we studied it a lot, we got a lot of good news from DOT just a few weeks ago, and we might need to highlight some of that plan, action plan on our website so that people can see what's actually being done. But apparently, things that we had been told wouldn't happen in my lifetime, with I-540 coming around, DOT has stepped up the priority to improve Highway fifty quite a bit. There's still going to be a lot left to the developers in terms There's still gonna be a lot left to the developers in terms of signal, signalization, lighting of the road, turn lanes. It's, it's not gonna be a magic cure, but there's a lot in, in progress, and we might wanna kinda highlight that information so our citizens can see what, what we've seen, and there's a ray of hope, there, there's a ray of hope. So, uh, that, that, we're getting pretty close to concluding the public hearing here. Uh, that was everyone who signed up to speak, that was applicant, staff, uh, and again, the decision before us tonight is not whether to approve or disapprove this, or to go through that detail or this detail, but to whether or not to, uh, follow our usual procedure, pass it along to the planning commission who studies those technical aspects and gets more input from the public before sending it back with any kind of a recommendation. So that's the, the object before us tonight. Is council ready to submit a motion on that idea?
Yes.
Some questions.
Okay, let's have some more discussion.
Uh, this is a staff question, maybe a developer question. I'm looking at a staff report and there was mention of wetlands and swamp, and there's nothing registered sort of on iMaps, other than flood, flood prone soils, but I didn't see any mention of stormwater. Is that not part of Tier One anymore? Is that site plan specific? And it's not ever included in zoning now?
Not unless they're proposing at this point, which would be hard, I think, to know sometimes, um, but they could propose something above and beyond, um, but at the very least, it's gonna have to meet the UDO requirements for the 110 and 25 year storm. But until they settle on a specific site plan and know the amount of impervious and all of that, it's hard to, we typically would not find that in a tier.
We, we've previously had conditions for retention and a 100-year retention, that could be added as a condition, and then it would have to be built around that condition, whether that meant doing underground or whatever, um, you know, it is one of the, you kinda punt that to the, a special use permit, I guess, when the site plan comes in and that is, I mean, I guess we could address it there, but kind of locking in some of these environmental concerns, um, okay, that helps with that question. I think, one of the other things, uh, is really kinda bothering me right now is this information changing meeting to meeting. It reminds me a lot of that North Garner project where every meeting, the numbers changed, the parameters changed, and if I've got, if a traffic impact analysis was done on the wrong number, then the right number wasn't clear enough. If I gotta do a reverse engineer, a maximum density number, that's not on us, that's on, this is the number right here. But I, and, and, and we've had testimony tonight that that number has changed. I, I'm in, and this goes in, in hand with the workforce housing, we gotta get something solid to send forward for planning commission to digest, not have the numbers that come out of this meeting change again when they go to the planning commission. Um, last comment is, you know, we're gonna zoom out on iMap right now, and I'm looking at that, that area, I'm seeing something very similar to Creech Road and that South Garner area where you've got large parcels all up and down that corridor awaiting development, some have plans, some further down, commercial, um, and it, you know, Creech Road is a blank slate when it comes to traffic congestion. We already have a congestion issue here, um, and trying to think of a solution that is comprehensive, and I know there's some other infrastructure priorities, or, what do you call it, priorities, but priorities and placement pump stations and other infrastructure that are extremely important for the development, um, down in that area. Um, so again, again, taking a step back to look at the full development potential down there, um, and the other is sort of waiting and seeing what is really gonna be the impact of 540 on 50. And we don't have to wait that long, they're gonna open this fall, and that's when you really start to gauge, is it, is it, is it making it better, or does it make it worse? And I think the VA clinic, what's the timeline for the VA clinic opening? Uh, John's not here. He actually has those numbers.
About a year from now, I believe.
It's still a year off.
About a year, yeah.
So, so Mr. Dellinger, uh, just an update on that. So, uh, construction is scheduled to start later this year with opening targeted for spring 2025.
Okay, okay. Uh, those are the only comments I have, is, is sort of tightening up some of the wishy-washy numbers so that what's going to, the planning commission is mutually understood between the applicant, council, and the public, um, and then planning commission, so we're all level set on what is moving forward. That's, uh, those are my thoughts at this time. Thank you.
I have a question, can Mr. Van, can I ask Mr. Vance a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vance is an engineer, retired from DOT not long ago. From your knowledge and experience, this signal warrant analysis, that has to be done after the project is completed, or it can be done as a process of the numbers if a plan's approved and they plug the numbers in?
Uh, that's a question, I'm sorry, I don't have the, the, the sequence as to when it has to be done.
Sure. I'll ask the developer, he'll answer that question.
Yeah, we have some traffic engineers here, if I can speak to that.
And I just wanna find out, does the project have to be done? Now usually, they'll say a project's gotta be built out before they do the traffic counts.
Yeah, it's a little behind, beyond my expertise.
Yeah, but this, it sounds like a signal warrant analysis might be able to be done beforehand, I don't know. Yes, sir?
Jody Lewis of VHB Engineering, happy to be here tonight to talk about this a little bit. Um, we did perform a signal warrant analysis based on the, the latest numbers, and it did meet the warrants, so that would be the recommendation moving forward, that is, traffic signal would be installed at the main entrance. However, that would have to be approved by any DOT, but it becomes a maintenance concern for them long-term. Uh, along with that, I would see that we probably have to provide communications up to 1010 Road so you coordinate the signal, so you don't have a lot of stop and go traffic out there. Um, yeah, we, it does meet the warrant now based on our projections, but DOT probably would want to see real numbers of traffic on the ground before they really go full bore, unless we can find out some reason to move forward prematurely.
And everybody has, and you have to remember that, we, we can't make the developer build the, the signal, it's a DOT highway and DOT has to authorize all of that.
And it's really close to BP, so there's a light there, and then you have it there, I don't think it's much difference.
Well, like the gentleman said, they would work on the computer and, you know, you coordinate that, but.
I think it's about 15 feet.
Thank you for the answer, because, you know, you've seen, you've done the analysis and it says it warrants it, but as you stated, they also may want to see the numbers from the ground.
Right.
Correct, okay, thank you for that answer, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments down this way?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to reinforce what you mentioned about the proposed improvements that are going, that are currently being considered for, uh, excuse me, for 50, uh, and to have that information readily available for the audience can know what those improvements are. One specifically, uh, state transportation improvement project, I'll speak on it briefly, is improvement, uh, on, on the bridge, Swift Creek Bridge from, uh, in proximity of Ran Road and Buffalo Road, and making that four lane in preparation to try to make it, to make 50 score better in the future so they can be widened even more, and there are other spot, spot locations that are being considered for improvements as well. So if you, to make that information available so that the public can be aware of the proposed improvements, I think it'd be beneficial.
Thank you, yeah. A lot going on, a lot going on. So again, uh, as a council member, uh, want to make a, make a recommendation, make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think we've really talked a lot and give the applicant a lot of information and share with the public and talk amongst ourselves, and, uh, I would, we just forward this on to the planning commission, that between now and then, it gives them time to , uh, straighten few things out and let them do their due diligence to come back to us.
Uh, we have a motion from Mr. Matthews to, I refer this to the planning commission for further study, further public input. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it, if you'll amend it and say, require them to have another neighborhood meeting.
So moved.
Okay.
I would like to offer another amendment, that they also be presented with staff prepared and consulted, consult with the developer on workforce housing options and percentages.
So we've got two amendments to the motion. What one has suggested, Mr. Singleton, that amendment was?
An additional neighborhood meeting because these numbers have changed, and some of these people that are here tonight have only been to one neighborhood meeting and.
Well, of course, planning commission is another place for hearing, but there's a motion, an amendment, uh, do you accept, uh, that, that amendment here, motion, Mr. Matthews? And the other was specifics on affordable housing options?
Yeah, that, the planning commission be presented with affordable housing.
With some information or options on that. Mr. Matthews, that accepted?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so the motion's been made with those two conditions, uh, and so those in favor of referring this to the planning commission with, uh, the, the need for, uh, both of the things that were added there, uh, let's signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, that we will pass this along. I wanna thank all of the citizens again for your coming and input, it is important, there are a lot of challenges, uh, life in Wake County is a challenge these days, and these are challenges we have to work through with our neighbors, uh, with our council, with our planning commission, with our development partners. Something's gonna go in that, on that land. It's not gonna be a deer field, it's not gonna be a farm. We have to do the best thing we can for everybody consumed and be fair to everybody. So that's the challenges we have, thank you for your input on that. So that closes, uh, the one, the one there on that particular thing, and we get to move along to the budget adoption. And anybody who needs to leave, my sympathies, uh, thank you for being here.
And Bear Guffin, while they're leaving out now, I would like to, I would, while they're leaving, I would like to say thank you, uh, to Councilman Singleton in reference to the Tier One, explaining that this was not the only Tier One that we've had before. I always think that it was the only one, thank you for the clarification.
He wanted to thank Grace or something. Something about, I thought he was the tier one.
This speaker's not working.
No, they're not, they're not gonna be that awesome.
Okay, okay, uh, excuse me, you're welcome to continue your discussions in the lobby, plenty of room, stick around as long as you like. Thanks for, we used to have a little more business we need to do in here.
And then we can go.
Okay, thank you. And here we go with the budget adoption, our presenter Sarah Warren, our budget director, uh, we're gonna speak to us about a 24, 25 operating budget ordinance, the capital projects ordinance, and fee schedule. So we turn it over to you.
So, what I have before you is just a recap of where we are with the proposed tax rates. We, um, don't have any additional information for you from the last meeting, um, so just a reminder, we started with a 43 and a half cent revenue neutral tax rate, uh, we've done an additional five cents to cover the total compensation package, uh, 1.6 cents for the revenue savings plan changes, which will now be the debt service fund, and 1.5 cents to cover new positions. So that brings us to a recommended tax rate of 52 cents. And I do want to remind you on where we are in the current process, um, so here we are at the last meeting in June, um, for the budget adoption. So I think you have, uh, the motion in front of you. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer anything you may have.
Is that it?
That's it.
We've been talking about this a lot, haven't we? Okay, uh, council, uh, members, any particular questions for Ms. Warren at this point? Okay, well, that being said, I just want, want to thank Ms. Warren and, and her staff and the two full-time budget analysts that work year-round doing this, and all of the department heads, all of the leaders who have been working diligently for months and months to pull this together. It's one of the biggest challenges of the year, it's one of the biggest decisions of the year, it sets the pace for, for the year to come. Nobody likes to see property taxes increase, uh, we just saw our evaluations of our homes go up 50-some percent in Wake County. Fortunately, our taxes are not gonna go up 50 percent, they're not gonna stay the same. Uh, our roughest calculation, this budget increase is about 13 percent over last year. My rough calculation on my home looks like my taxes will go up about 15 percent, uh, and, and the good news, in my mind, that about two-thirds of that is related to pay adjustments for our employees, our, our police, our, our staff, our engineers, the IT people, planners, we've finally gotten up in line with the rest of the triangle that we can hire and retain the great employees that we need. Our police department, for example, first-class, nationally recognized, and we are actively recruiting successfully, uh, policemen from other jurisdictions because we've raised our pay level. So two-thirds of this, uh, increase in the budget is directly related to our staff that are long overdue. Uh, the other third, somewhere between inflation, which includes paying more for our debt service that's out there. You notice interest rates have gone up. These, these, spending has been well managed, uh, we, we have not been spent, spend thrifts, we're not spending money foolishly, this is, I'm coming in six months on the job, I mentioned, I've been real impressed with how conscientious, uh, every town employee, every department head, every budget analyst is about not being careless with the expenses. I don't think our problem is that we've overspent, I think we've under-collected, uh, over the years. We've been reluctant to raise taxes, we've been reluctant to ask developers to build above-average properties with above-average tax assessments, and you've already seen your council here being sensitive to that, asking for more. Uh, we've got information coming to us in a couple weeks that'll help us make even better financial decisions about the long-term financial sustainability of any house, any townhouse, any apartment, any business coming on board, and we, we ask for your support as we look at this, and try to apply this new metric, a metric that's been around but has not been used as much. So that's gonna keep us from having 10 and 15 percent property tax increases year after year. I believe there is a ray of sunshine here, and I greatly appreciate the work that's been doing, been done by the council, uh, our economic development and our planning people. We have great new business coming in in the Garner Pipeline, the, everything from the warehouses, distribution centers, across from Amazon, you've all seen, down Golf Guy Road, down Highway 70, there's unbelievably nice, modern distribution centers, uh, and warehouse facilities down there that are adding to help us get out of our deficit here by, uh, paying more property tax than it costs to serve them. So the, the, it's on the way, the most exciting in my mind is the, is the new quadrant at White Oak with the Wake Med Project coming in there. They're gonna have a 50-acre campus of medical facilities there at White Oak, there's another 200 or so acres that will be developed with supporting businesses, uh, retail, restaurants, super grocery stores, things that you've all been asking for, all pegged off of that development. Those, those developments will be paying more in property tax than it costs to provide the services. That's gonna be some relief from our incessant tax increases. So the news is good, the work has been good, uh, I really applaud you for all the work you've done putting this budget together. Now, are there any other questions, any other discussion from council members before we start making these five different motions that we have to make on this? Now, this is a complicated, and I'm gonna count on our town attorney to help guide me through this, uh, and since this, this is such a sensitive area of spending town money, we have to be particularly conscious of anybody who might be involved in any other organization that is a recipient of town money, such as nonprofits. And we do have one council member who has been community-minded enough, uh, he's actually involved in two of those that coincidentally receive funds from the town, and so, uh, Mr. Vance has requested recusal, uh, on voting on appropriations to the Community of Hope Ministries and the MLK Celebration Committee. So first of all, we have to see, is there a motion to, to approve his recusal?
So moved.
Second.
Movement by Mr. Matthews, second by Ms. Behringer, uh, all in favor of allowing, uh, Mr. Vance to recuse himself from that vote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? That passes unanimously. And now we'll go to Action One, which is, uh, a, a motion to adapt the budget ordinance including all of the expenditures except for those two items, the two nonprofits that we just mentioned, and since they're excluded from this vote, Mr. Vance can vote on this particular one of four options. So is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of budget ordinance 2024-5274, including all anticipated expenditures except for the portion of special appropriations allocated to the Community of Hope Ministries and the MLK Celebration Committee.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer, there's a motion and a second, uh, to, to approve, to approve the budget ordinance, including everything except those two expenditures. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay?
Nay.
Okay, might have to go back and. Okay, might have to go back and count here. Okay, so Mr. Matthews made the motion, Ms. Behringer seconded it, and I'll go by and ask for an aye or a nay. Mr. Matthews, you're voting?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer voting?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
No.
Voted no. Mr. Vance cannot vote on this one.
He may vote on this one.
Excuse me, go ahead now, Mr. Vance.
Aye.
Okay, three to two, this vote carries. Thank you for stepping me through this. Okay, so the budget motion passes, we move to the second part, which Mr. Vance will be recused from because this is a motion to adopt the budget ordinance, including the expenditures to those two, okay? And Ms. Jones, can you explain to us the difference between what just passed and this one? This, this is all-inclusive, the other one passed except those, so that one passed. Now we have another vote coming up, Mr. Vance has recused himself from.
Great, this, this motion would allow these two expenditures, anticipated expenditures to be reincorporated into the budget, and with Mr. Vance not voting, he doesn't run afoul of the state statute called the Transparency Act where he's not allowed to vote on proposed appropriations to a nonprofit that he's affiliated with.
Okay, so this is just for appropriation to those two nonprofits?
Right, to incorporate that back into the budget ordinance.
The one was to everything else, the first was to everything else, this is to now include those two.
Yes.
Okay, so is there, is there a motion related to, to this item?
I'll make this motion, but I would like to get a point of clarification. In the event of a tie, since not knowing how everybody's going to vote, if it did come up to a tie, does the mayor break this tie?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make the motion, I move to approve the anticipated expenditures to Community of Hope Ministries, a local nonprofit organization that Mayor Pro Tim Vance is affiliated with as a board member, and the MLK Celebration Committee for which Mayor Pro Tim Vance is affiliated as a member.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Ms. Behringer moves that, okay. And again, this is only for the appropriation going to those two nonprofits. So I guess we'd better go down and have a roll call vote again. We'll start, Mr. Matthews has made the motion, aye or nay?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
This is just those two items, I'll say aye.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr., Mr. Vance not voting, okay? That motion carries four to zero unanimously on that. Thank you. Moving along to action item three, and this is the project ordinance that has to do, and Ms. Warren, do you want to explain us the difference between the project versus the budget?
So the project ordinance allocates funds into our capital program, so these are funds that are above and beyond what's already been previously allocated through the bond program to appropriate additional revenues essentially in another ledger.
Okay, any, any questions for Ms. Warren, from council members? Okay, is there a motion related to the project budget?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of project ordinance 2024-5275.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Behringer seconds? Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to, to adopt the project ordinance as related to the budget ordinance, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay?
No.
To read it correctly, it's two nays, raise your hand for nay.
Yes.
There were two nays, and the ayes were three others. Signify by raising your hand if you voted aye. Okay, so that's three ayes, that, that motion passes. Action item number four, and this has to do with the fee schedule. Ms. Warren, the fee schedule?
So the fee schedule sets the rates for services and other, services and permits and all the other revenue sources that the town utilizes, aside from the tax rate.
Okay, so that's before us now, is, is there any question for Ms. Warren on the fee schedule?
I have a question, and it could be as a motion or part of the motion. I see the fee schedules for the boathouse did not change based on the conversation we had at the budget meeting, and I just find it excessive to double the hourly rate for the boathouse. I think we should wait to implement any increases until after we have a new boathouse, since we're going to get rid of the boathouse in a couple of years. So I guess as part of a motion that is made to do, maintain boathouse fees at their current levels. Well, I'll make that, I move, we make a, we move adoption as a FY2425 fee schedule, however maintaining the current fee structure and amounts for boat rentals at the boathouse.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger, for the motion, is there a second?
No.
A second? Okay, second by Mr. Vance. Okay, let's, let's try, try a voice vote on this one. All in favor of adopting the 2425 fee schedule, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Hearing no nays, it sounds to be unanimous, that passes. Okay, thank you. So what else on the budget? Do I hear a celebration in, in process over there? So that, that concludes our, our motions related to the budget. Thanks for the hard work all of you have done, that all of the town staff has done, just, just a phenomenal job. I know we have another one coming up and then some other things. I'm thinking about a five-minute recess, so we'll be refreshed and relaxed when we come back here. So let's take five and be back just exactly by ten o'clock, please. We'll make, we'll make this quick, we want to give our full attention to the Vintage Garner.
I think we need to give the next presenter five bonus points for hanging in this late night, Mr. Mayor, just consider it.
Take you down there.
Recession. And we're still experimenting with our new sound system here, microphones. Loud speakers, thanks for your patience on all that. But let's start out by getting some earplugs here, either one. Or let's start out with the bang with a tier two conditional zoning at Vintage Garner. Our presenter is Jeff Treisenberg, our planning director. You've been waiting all night anxiously to make. To hear that lovely sound.
With the feedback. Yes, good evening again, Mayor and council members. This is a case that you have seen before for public hearing, and it has been to the Planning Commission and is back to you. You will notice though that the PowerPoint is the old style PowerPoint because this public hearing was actually conducted before the adoption of the new comprehensive plan. So everything has been done in terms of eval- evaluation of plan consistency with that former plan, as we noted when we adopted the new one. So again, just a reminder, Tom Johnson, attorney with Williams Mullen, was the official applicant. He is here with his team tonight to answer any final questions that you may have. You see all the other information there. This is the tract at the corner of 401 and Farm Road, a little over forty-three acres. And just as a reminder, this is the setting here. Won't spend too much time. The current zoning is LI east of the railroad tracks and RA west of the railroad tracks. And again, I'm not going to go through all of the conditions. You've seen these before. I will note the one that was added here at the end was the inclusion of committing to a public transit easement on the property. So that has been added and agreed to by the applicant. And I'll get here back to the master plan, which was the crux, I think, of most of the discussion and analysis before. You see here the layout for the apartments as well as the mixed use portion up here in the front. Well, I say that adds the mix of use to the overall site with those commercial buildings up front and the kind of pedestrian plaza area in the middle. The applicant did provide these three D renderings for you. You've seen these before as well, but just wanted to highlight those. And again, looking at their overall open space allocations, they do have quite a bit of preservation on the western end of the site. And then they have allocated their active spaces here through the apartment area with their two main amenities here in both corners. More of an open space feature with, I think, the dog parks and things right here in the middle, as well as some space here at the western edge as well. And there's some trails that I think, if I recall correctly, wander back through here. So when we looked at the future land use map, again, we were looking at the old plan, but we did have the new plan in mind. And in a little bit of deference to our new kind of grading system of having kind of modest support or modest non-support, we did come up with what we presented to the Planning Commission as somewhat consistent. It is a corridor commercial designation under the old plan, so certainly there are some things about it with the residential component that don't necessarily fit the commercial corridor, highway, or heavy industrial center type aspect. However, the old plan did acknowledge through these very large concentric circles that there was to be expected some change as development got closer with the bringing of utilities to the area that might present this more as a mixed use opportunity as well to focus on kind of an activity center. Just as reference, the new plan does have a community activity center kind of right here at the intersection of Old Stage and 401. So this site does now fall within that community activity center designation. So the, between the two plans, I think this kind of was a foreshadowing of that new plan that we have adopted. In terms of the transportation plan, they are meeting all of the recommended requirements in terms of widening that would be required along the frontages of their property on both 401 and Farm Road. The Park Recreation Greenways Cultural Resources Master Plan, this was not in a Parkland search area. This was reviewed by Park staff at the time. There are no planned greenways within the area. So with the payment of the fee in lieu of Parkland dedication, as all residential projects need to do, this can be considered consistent with that plan as well. So we did provide a summary of the Planning Commission meeting in your staff report. There was a lot of good discussion, clarifying questions, you know, just about the, some of the calculations, how the new, the old plan versus the new comprehensive plan. So you see some of those things. And one of their specific questions was about public transit access along the 401 corridor and whether that easement could be provided. So that did lead directly to that additional condition that's been proposed by the applicant. And so when they got to the consistency statement, the statement that we drafted for them that they did adopt was that we, the Planning Commission, find this request to rezone approximately forty-three point two-six acres from light industrial and rural agricultural to commercial mixed use conditional for a mixed use development of a maximum of six hundred and fifty-four multifamily units and forty thousand square feet of commercial space to be somewhat consistent with the future land use map, given the availability of public water and sewer and the site's location within and adjacent to the commercial and mixed use areas of change. We further find that the project is consistent with other adopted plans, including the twenty-ten slash eighteen Garner Transportation Plan and the PRGCR Master Plan. This was adopted on unanimous vote of seven to zero and recommending approval of this case back to you as the town council. So here tonight, you are responsible for also adopting a statement regarding reasonableness. And we have highlighted those two options for you under the consistency side, that you can find it either consistent and reasonable or consistent but not reasonable, given what you would like to cite as your reasons for doing so. As I noted, the applicant is here to answer any questions. Most of, I think, what I saw in their presentation was just to go over mostly the renderings again, but if you do have any questions for them, they're here as well.
Okay, does the applicant want to make another presentation, make a statement?
Can I ask Mr. Treisenberg a question first?
Sure.
You mentioned the renderings in here, but I think we need, as is stated in our package, that they are sample elevations to meet requirements for Article Nine and sample open station. It didn't say anything that this is going to look like this. It just says they're samples provided.
Yes, they are. So these are, these are samples that would meet the new, the new requirements. If they came in markedly different, we would definitely have a discussion with them about that. So we do expect them to be somewhat similar as to the form and the style that they're presenting, but not exact per se.
Right, clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Similar question, and I feel like this may have been answered at a different time, and I may have forgotten the answer. I'd heard there were going to be four stories, and I heard it said, and I heard it said to Planning Commission, but what I'm reading through the conditions, the condition two says maximum building height for multifamily buildings shall be fifty-seven feet and may be attained in accordance with provisions of setbacks, but I'm not seeing a minimum and, which is concerning because you can only decrease intensity without coming back to council, but you can't increase intensity. So I've heard the four-story thing multiple times, but I'm not seeing it represented anywhere. And so I'm just wanting, I want to see where that is. I see maximum. I don't see a minimum. How have we gotten this far and not have it written down?
It's in the site data box on the plan, on the master plan.
Which I don't have on here.
You don't have up there?
No.
Yeah. It is on that.
It's on what?
This, the site data table on the site plan, on the master plan.
Is that incorporated by reference to the conditions?
That's, the master plan is being approved as part of it. It's not in the conditions, but it's approved as part of your, because it's a tier two and it includes a master plan and the conditions.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, how we treat that.
Okay. In the future, it'd be helpful to have all that included, because I feel like I was missing a piece. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Tom Johnson, the applicant, and I need to do that for the record, I know.
Thank you. Yeah, we got a little bit out of sync here.
We did get a little bit out of sync. I was trying to help Jeff out a little bit.
Back on group. Okay. Other questions for the applicant or for Mr. Treisenberg?
I don't have any.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sure, not right in a second.
Good questions. Yes, oh yes, I didn't see you. I missed my chance. Looking at the permitted use table, and I see, and I saw it brought up in Planning Commission, too, veterinary kennel with outdoor operations, convenience store without fuel sales, and convenience store with fuel sales. I don't think that's what we want on 401 in front of a residential development. So I'm, I would recommend striking those as, as permitted uses. That's at your discretion, but I, I don't think we want to see a gas station sitting in front of. The veterinary kennel with, with outdoor operations, convenience store without fuel sales, and convenience store with fuel sales.
Those three we can get off.
Okay. Okay, great.
It, it's fine to take those three off, which is convenience store without fuel sales, convenience store with fuel sales, sales, and the kennel with outdoor operations.
We very easily could have a vet clinic.
Right, we could have a vet clinic in there, which you'd like to keep, but it'd be indoor.
Right.
Yeah. And that could very well, because there is a demand for that and for it to be convenient to the citizens, which would make sense here.
Also have some concern on the, the size of the, and preservation of the buffer on the southern side of the property. In the renderings, there's sort of a depiction of those garages there. And, you know, you've used up all your tree preservation on the other side of the railroad tracks, which is convenient, but not really conducive to how we're expecting tree preservation to work. And you're abutting this large, commercial, light industrial area in that perimeter buffer. One is small and two doesn't sort of mandate. I'm not quite sure what the screening requirement is, but one of the biggest problems I have with this project is it's sitting, it's a little out of place. Surrounded by that light industrial. And in the renderings, the, those garages are conveniently not on the renderings on that side of the property. It's all trees. So there's a little concern I have there. I'm not going to have to answer. I'm, I'm going to list all my concerns and come back to them. The others, workforce housing, don't see anything there. Volunteered or presented, this project's been in the pipeline a long time, but both versions of the UDO mention it as of interest to the town and the community. And I think one of the previews, we can't solve it all with one. Well, you can't solve it all with none, and if you take every project. And then the last concern I have is on the stormwater retention. And I have a question about the stormwater retention. Do you have someone here to answer stormwater retention questions?
We do.
So it says, what was it, five, ten, twenty-five year event, so.
Correct.
Explain, you have retention. You have a five-year rain event. What happens to the retention?
Okay.
What happens?
I'll have my stormwater expert come and tell you what the five, ten, twenty-five.
Here we go. So you've five, ten, twenty-five year flood retention. So your five-year flood or rain event, what happens with the water retention?
So what that means is the peak flow of the five-year storm, pre-development, we will, we will match that flow in the post-development condition by providing retention. So that's, just, it's the intensity of that storm.
So at a ten-year, it would do the same?
We, we provide attention for that storm as well. It's just a more intense storm.
In twenty-five, it would, in theory, retain that as well?
It retains that as well. Yep, it's a more intense storm.
Hundred-year?
We aren't required to provide attention for that, but.
What would happen?
What would happen if we did provide detention?
If, if you have the twenty-five retention and you have a hundred-year flood event, what happens?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So the stormwater is designed to do twenty-five year maximum. That's its maximum, right? You have a hundred-year flood event, what happens?
So we don't provide attention for that, so it, the maximum post-developed flow would or could exceed the pre-development flow for that year storm.
And that means it would overflow?
That means you have more flow in the post-development condition than you do in the pre. It's not going to overflow the pond, but you're just going to have an increase in flow.
So even with a hundred-year flood event, all the rain is captured on that property and stays?
I still don't understand what your question is.
What would a hundred-year flood retention do that a twenty-five-year flood retention not do?
Twenty-five-year retention is completely contained within that pond, and the post-development flow does not increase.
And if you.
In the twenty-five-year storm.
And then you have a hundred-year flood event?
Then it will increase. The pond is designed to be able to detain that water and safely pass it through the SEM, but it won't reduce the flow to the pre-development level.
But it would exceed its capacity? A hundred-year flood event?
It will exceed the pre-development flow, but it won't exceed the capacity of the pond. The pond is designed to safely capture and release that flow.
Even a hundred-year? Five-hundred-year flood event?
Well, there's gonna.
I guess the point I'm getting to is.
That is going to potentially overflow the pond. I don't know what that storm event is.
So my, my concern is this, that this is in a critical watershed, this project. And we've had other projects in Swift Creek watershed that have done voluntary hundred-year flood retention. We had one tonight that talked to us about green examples of stormwater retention, and I know that additional tree preservation can do that as well. I have concerns with not doing the most possible to protect the environment in critical watershed. That's a huge environmental concern. And you're, I'm not sure, it's a concern for the people who live there, it's a concern for neighbors, it's a concern for people downstream, it's a concern for people who drink water. I mean, if it weren't, if water contamination overflow wasn't an issue.
Basically, what the pond does is collect it and it slowly filters out. If there's a larger event, and correct me if I'm wrong, it'll just flow out quicker, but it's not going to overflow. It's built into that. Like, I live next to the stormwater pond in my subdivision. It's got a, an overflow there, so if it hits that, it starts flowing on out rather than slowly flowing out. So it just controls the rate of flow coming out, but it's designed that if that happens, it's going to flow in a controlled way down the stream. So it's not that it won't work, and it'll be a catastrophic thing that it will overflow.
What you described is.
I'm sorry.
Flooding. That's what.
It's just, it's just discharging the water. It's not really flooding. The pond would be full, but the water would come out faster at the, at the drainage end. So it's built so that it will do that and will control it. If it's not there, and we've had this with his colleague here who was here before, there is no control there right now, period. There's a stream there and next to that, and there's no control.
It's also fifty acres of trees there.
Well, there are trees there, but they're still with that pond. It's, I mean, with that stream that's there is going, you know, there's no control over it. This provides some control where none exists because there's a stream there. It's not that there, the trees alone aren't the issue, the streams is too. So it's going to provide some control where it doesn't exist. But we're meeting the requirements of the ordinance in doing it the way it was designed.
You could also do it underground storm retention as well. That's what is mentioned in the commercial, right?
We're doing underground.
We're doing some underground on the commercial already.
You're not going to do it with the residential, which is technically commercial. Why?
We just chose, based upon the pond and capacity and what we needed, we did underground for the commercial and above ground for the residential. It just happens to be where it, where it fit within the project. It was just a design consideration. That's it.
The underground would fit in the project, too.
I'm sorry?
The underground would work in the project, too, right?
I mean, it can. It's, it's just another alternative to use, but in this case, this is what we chose to use.
Okay.
These were the design parameters for the project.
All the questions I have right now.
Okay. Other comments, questions from council members? Okay. This is not a public hearing, but I don't know if we had anyone sign up who wanted to speak. We didn't. Okay, thank you. So I guess at this point, we've had some questions, we've had some answers, and we can get, get a motion and a second to adopt and have some more discussion if we like.
Yeah, I was, I'll give everybody else a chance to talk, some other issues that were brought by Planning Commission of concern on the public plaza layout, but I'll defer to council members.
So would, would you like to discuss those now?
I'll defer to whom else has any questions or comments before.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
First of all, this has come before us, and this location is, I would agree, is a prime location. I'm glad to see that the retail, whatever that's going to wind up being, I understand that renderings are renderings, but at that particular location, I, I feel certain that there'll definitely be retail, be a, be the loss of an opportunity. Having said that, I move that the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment, request for adopted land use plans detailed in section six of the staff report as our own, and I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number two zero two four five two seven six, approving rezoning CZ MP two two one four, as the request is reasonable in the public interest because it will most likely promote multifamily housing in select areas.
Okay, so there's a motion to be made to approve the project by Mr. Matthews. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vance. Any other questions or discussion?
I do have a few more comments. I know it's late, but we have job to do. I didn't see any movement on the buffer between the two uses. We have light industrial, and I, probably going to grade all the way to that property line. And there's no, he's just sitting there, so I guess he's not going to get up and make a condition change. I haven't heard anything about workforce housing either. No voluntary condition regarding workforce housing, something we consistently say that we care about and would like to see as part of all the projects we approve. Okay. That's all.
I can, I didn't know you were addressing it to me or making comments, so I'm, I'm, in terms of workforce housing, I did mention this at the public hearing, I've been involved with other multifamily projects in Garner, and the demographics of one that I know, and I've seen those demographics from the one at Fifty and Timber. And once it was built, and we got the demographics up after a few years, it was healthcare workers, teachers, firefighters, and, and those types that were living there. Now, they may be two-income households where, you know, it's two healthcare workers, or a healthcare worker and a teacher, or, or a firefighter and a teacher. But that was the demographics that we're showing in those apartments. So these will be market rate apartments, but there will be folks that work in our community that will be in those.
I remember asking you very specifically to provide that information to me.
Right.
Do you remember that?
Yeah, I, I don't have that, and I don't have access to that. That was a prior client I worked with. All I can say is from what I, the experience of me seeing that, but that was specific on those demographics. I just don't have those. And it'll have, or have the permission to share the specifics of that, so.
So I remember, I remember the meeting in December, and you did say you would provide that information, because I was curious as to where you got that data from, and now you're saying you're not allowed to share that data.
Well, it's another client, and it's not like I have, you know, free information to be able to share on that, but I know, I personally saw the demographics and know that, that that was what the experience was based, even though they're market rate apartments. But the thing is, these are, you know, to be able to provide, yeah, providing this type of apartment provides housing in the community. It adds units in the community, which tends to make more housing available. to make more housing available, which in turn causes rent. You know, you've got more availability, you've got better rents.
So you represented to me that you had that information and that you would provide it.
Right. I wasn't meaning to misrepresent that to you. I don't, I said I had seen it. I don't have the ability to provide that to you. I'm just being honest with you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm calling for the question. I think it's the late hour. We need to move on with this.
It shouldn't be the late hour. If we're serious about workforce housing, you ask them about it. Apparently, we're not. So we just talk.
Well, that's, that's some interpretation that's not correct.
We talk a good game. We talk a good game. We're not serious about it.
We have a motion and a second to approve this project that's come back from the Planning Commission.
Yes, for the call for the question. So you need to vote on that first?
Yeah.
Yes.
You need a supermajority, I believe, to do that. Am I correct?
I call for the question. It goes for a vote.
Well, no, it doesn't go, it goes for a vote on the call for the question. It doesn't go automatically to a vote. You got a vote on his call for the question. That's Robert's rules. You can't force the vote.
I'm going to ask our town attorney on this. Do we need...
I made the motion, so I can call for the question.
You can't...
Well, let me ask our town attorney here, our parliamentarian. What do we need to vote on? Are we voting on, that we go ahead and have a vote, or are we voting on the
So you're, you're not under Robert's rules, you're under your meeting rules of procedure, which are a modified version of that. You can do a motion to end debate, which is to call the previous question, that if adopted, this motion terminates debate on the pending motion, thereby bringing it to an immediate vote. This motion is not in order until every member has had an opportunity to speak at least once, or speak once on the pending motion. So yes, you would vote on calling the question, and if that passes, it doesn't have to be a supermajority, then you would vote on the motion.
Okay. So the question has been called, and now we have to vote if we want to go ahead and vote on it.
And basically, to end debate, and then you would vote on the motion.
Okay, so the motion been made to end debate.
Correct.
In effect. And now we'll have a roll call vote to see if we're going to end debate.
He needs a second. He still needs a second on his motion.
We need a second on the motion to end debate.
Yes.
Is there a second to end debate? Okay, Ms. Behringer seconds the motion to end debate. So we have a motion and a second to end debate, and there's no going to be, it's not going to need more discussion on that. We just vote, and we'll take a roll call vote, and we'll start down at this end. Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dallinger?
No.
And Mr. Vance?
Yea, yes.
Okay, so we have three votes in favor of ending the discussion, and now the motion is back up for a vote.
Correct.
And the vote is whether to approve this project, approve the ordinance. That was, that was the original motion.
Correct.
And the second was made by Mr. Vance, and so we'll go back and have a roll call vote in, in the same order that we just did. Those in favor of approving this project?
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dallinger?
No.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Okay, this motion passes by three to two. Thank you, thank you for your vote and your discussion. This was a perplexing one. It was a difficulty. But that concludes that item on the agenda. We'll move along now to committee reports, and we'll go around and ask council members if there's a report from the committee that you're assigned to. We'll start with Mr. Vance.
No reports.
Mr. Dallinger?
Yes, just like to thank everyone who came out to the Juneteenth program on Saturday. Went off well, went off without a hitch, got a lot of positive feedback. So it's been a good couple of years doing that program, and just glad that it gets better every year. And with this year, we did give an award, the first-ever Garner Cultural Heritage Award to Ms. Perry. So we created a new award, and she was the first recipient. So it was a good day, and she was very surprised. I think her daughter caught the worst end of that surprise for keeping it a secret, but it was a good day, and it was a good event.
I've just got to say, it was a spectacular event, unbelievable talent on display, unbelievably inspirational, just a great, great thing, okay? Including the special award, okay? Any other committee reports? Ms. Behringer, any committee report? Mr. Singleton?
Thumbs up on Juneteenth. Ms. Perry just about threatened her daughter for not letting her know about it.
[laughing]
She said, "I'm going to, I'm going to get on her for not letting me know about this."
She got a surprise award, and she blamed her daughter for keeping it from her.
For not, for not sharing, for not sharing.
No, blame her daughter.
No blaming her daughter, for not telling her.
It was rather topical. Mr. Matthews, any committee report?
Our veterans committee met last week, and we've got a lot of events coming up, and appreciate to find staff there helping us out, and those ladies work hard, and got a lot of good things coming, so.
Excellent.
Especially will be how they display out at the 3rd of July, then, of course, Veterans Day, and we're working on some other events with speakers. And the wall at Hills is in Ashboro, and it'll be available for visiting starting tomorrow. And I plan on going down with another vet on Friday to be there when it opens up, so a lot going on.
Ashboro, not Ashville, Ashboro.
Ashboro, yeah, down 49 Highway outside of Silver City.
Have a good trip. Fantastic. Thanks for the reports. And we have manager reports, I think, Talk of the Town?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just going to quickly highlight some of the items in your June Talk of the Town monthly report. There's several items that council has asked us to, from a staff perspective, to provide some information and data on, specifically around projects that are, have been approved but are not moving forward, as well as looking at sub streets and inventory problem areas and spots. And so I just wanted to make council aware that staff is working on both of those projects, and will provide information when we complete that work. Looking at our ETJ update, I shared with you the video that our talented communications team put together to help people understand what we're doing as far as expanding the ETJ and what that means. And so that's part of our public engagement work as part of this process. Staff will also be hosting four public meetings in order to answer questions, provide information to those who are interested in this topic. Our first meeting is Thursday, June 20th, at St. Andrew's Methodist, United Methodist Church, from 4:00 to 7:00, and then we have three meetings next week on the 24th, 26th, and 27th. Information on location and times are provided in your report, and we'll make sure that information is sent out and posted on all our social media sites and on the website as well. Finally, just a quick reminder that it's quickly upon us, our July 3rd celebration will be here before we know it. Always excited to host this event. It is the 30th year of the Garner Independence Day celebration, so we're excited to be part of that. July 3rd at Lake Benson, gates will open at 5:00 for all the events, and it should be a spectacular event as it always is. Looking at your Garner Info monthly analytics, over the last 30 days or so, we had 47 total requests. As you can imagine, just the season that we're in, we get lots of concerns and complaints regarding tall grass and property maintenance. And so our Public Works Department, our inspections team, and our police department have been very busy answering those requests for service and looking into those issues. So that is my quick update for this evening. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Very, very good. Thank you very much. And attorney reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind you that the North Carolina League of Municipalities' Commitment to Civility Training is this Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., followed by a brief discussion, council members, until about 3:30. That is a virtual session. We will meet here. It is not an on-demand session at this point, so I believe we have four of the six members confirmed for that.
Okay, yeah, I really hope that all of us can attend. If you can't, maybe you can at least dial in for the 30-minute discussion at the end, but this will be some good common language, some good common experience. I think you've been awfully civil tonight, all of you, under pressure, and I appreciate your professionalism and your courtesy, and we just need to keep reinforcing that, practicing that. We want to be role models for all the other dysfunctional town boards that might be around out there, are less than happily getting along. So I'm real proud of this board, and any tune-up we can do, I think is time well spent. Anything else, Ms. Jones?
And then, coupled with that, next week at your work session, the legal department will present you with an amended code of conduct and ethics for your consideration.
Okay. And were there any other council reports or anything other than your committees?
I just want to say that again, job well done on the Juneteenth. Activities on Saturday is very well done, and that, it's, it's late, and thank you so much for all that you've done, Mr. Dillinger, with that activity and pulling it together with the community and everything. And that's all I have. I just wanted to say that, okay?
Okay. Mr. Dallinger, any other reports or comments? Ms. Behringer? Mr. Singleton?
Yes. Now that we have a new state champion in the high school, it's time to update our signs. So we got the Welcome to Garner sign of 70, East and West, and we've got the sign on at Centennial Park. So we need to replace the three that say the boys' basketball champions in 2015 with the new 2024 state softball champions. And then, we need to take those three signs, we take down, give one to the high school, put one at Avery Street, and one at the rec center.
I agree with that.
Because a lot of those guys from that 2015 team that was at rec center then and played at Avery Street, and then put it up in the, also in the rec center, because when we had the Scotty signs, there were only two, I think, at the time, maybe three. But anyway, he got one. There was three. The high school got one, and of course, there's one in the G-PAC. So whenever we can get that, that rolling, that'd be nice. I look forward to that. Now, that'll take a little time to get coordinated and get done, but we need to update our signs.
That's an excellent idea.
They are.
It sounds like it's happening even as we speak.
Yep. And then we say the other signs, and people can see that. And then when we win another championship, you, you can put them together.
There you go. Excellent.
Don't ever know what happened to the 87 football signs. They were there one time. Don't tell them where they are.
In the Smithsonian, I'm sure.
Well, in somebody's house.
If I may also say, in reference to the budget this year and the support of the staff to be a part, to ask the questions for the citizens, and to meet with the citizens, and to provide those, the insight into the methodology as to what went into the planning of the, or developing of the budget, I would say for myself personally, I really appreciate that extra help, that extra effort that was given by the staff. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And we're looking at a couple of the award-winning citizen participation. You guys stayed as long as the cops and the clerks, man. Y'all, y'all were tough, tough. Thanks for your input. Thanks for being here and your support, and all the work that you've done to help us as we go, and that...
Mayor, real quick, if I can remind everyone that tomorrow is a town holiday, along with the state and holiday. We're observing the June 19th holiday, so town hall and our other public facilities will be closed tomorrow.
And if we don't get out of here soon, we'll be in violation of the closing town hall.
They're going to want a food fast for staying all the whole meeting.
I thought it was a great reception we had for our town manager this, early this evening, a great turnout, and a good-looking family, and her husband is... Should I say it?
I was going to say, what are you going to say?
We certainly enjoyed meeting the family. I'm so glad they could come. And the food was great, too. So that being said, is there, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. Behringer and seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
And nay, keep your nays to yourself. Go home. Thank you. We stand adjourned. Thank all of you. Thank you, sir. You maintain order. Just your presence here kept everybody calm.